The committee room, right here to the right. To tonight's regular meeting of the Woburn City Council of March 18, 2025. Just a reminder to everyone, tonight's meeting is being recorded for broadcast. Also, please silence your cell phones. If you can, please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, just for anyone who just came in, if you're more comfortable and you want to sit down, we do have the TV all set up in the committee room, and you'll be part of the process. And then during the public hearing, and anyone that wants to respond can leave that room and come right in here and be part of the process. So, again, if you're more comfortable, that's all set up there. Thank you very much. Clerk Higgins, if you call a roll, please.
Counsel Campbell.
Present.
Counsel Demers.
Present.
Counsel Demambro.
Present.
Counsel Ferrulo.
Present.
Counsel Mercer Bruin.
Here.
Counsel Papalatto.
Present.
Counsel Toro.
Present.
Counsel Viola.
Present.
President Dillon.
Present.
Make a motion to dispense with the reading of the previous meeting's journal and approve.
Second.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to suspend the rules to take the two resolves regarding the Eagle Scouts as the next matters on the agenda?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes.
The first resolve is for Eagle Scout Lucas Crispo.
Whereas Eagle Scout is the highest honor for Boy Scouts of America, and whereas Woburn resident Lucas Crispo became a member of Troop 502 in Woburn, Massachusetts, and whereas Lucas Crispo chose his Eagle Scout Community Service Project to design and build picnic tables for students to eat lunch and socialize during recess, and a small storage shed for playground equipment at the Goodyear Elementary School, and whereas Lucas Crispo successfully passed his Eagle Scout Board of Review and was recognized at the Special Court of Honor on January 12, 2025, for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Woburn that the Woburn City Council recognizes the achievements and accomplishments of Lucas Crispo and extends best wishes and hopes for future, continued future success. Signed by President Dillon and the members of the City Council.
Congratulations, job well done.
Next item is for Eagle Scout Connor Wilson.
Whereas Eagle Scout is the highest honor for Boy Scouts of America, and whereas Woburn resident Connor Wilson became a member of Troop 502 in Woburn, Massachusetts, and whereas Connor Wilson chose for his Eagle Scout Community Service Project to design and build an informational kiosk in a high-traffic area dedicated to pickleball that offers numerous benefits, such as providing easy access to essential information about local courts, game rules, tournament schedules, and community events. Whereas Connor Wilson successfully passed his Eagle Scout Board of Review and will be recognized at a Special Court of Honor on May 18, 2025, for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Woburn that the Woburn City Council recognizes the achievements and accomplishments of Connor Wilson and extends best wishes and hope for continued future success. Signed, President Jeff Dillon and members of the City Council.
Congratulations. Samantha, before we start, would you just tell the people out in the lobby there, remind them that the committee room is open if they want. Thank you.
Make a motion that both resolves are adopted.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That passes.
Make a motion to return to the regular order of business.
Second.
A motion and a second to return to regular order of business, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
First item on the agenda we have is the order that $48,812.85 to be transferred from mayor's salary adjustment account to fire regular salary count.
Make a motion that matter be referred to the Committee on Finance.
Second.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on the agenda we have is an order that $129,190.23 to be transferred from mayor's salary adjustment account to various non-union employee salary, various salary counts.
Make a motion that matter be referred to the Committee on Finance.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Sure, thank you. Thank you, Samantha. Don't be afraid to come right down in the front row, just like at school.
Next item on the agenda we have is an order to amend the Woburn Municipal Code, Section 2-180, relative to non-union salaries.
Make a motion that matter be referred to the Committee on Ordinance, Charter, and Rules?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Order authorizing the man to grant by deed Lot A on Forest Park Circle to Judith A. Boustery.
Make a motion that the matter is referred to the Committee on Infrastructure and Public Lands.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on the agenda, order authorizing the man to grant by deed Lot B on Forest Park Circle to William and Lisa Booker.
Same action?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
The next order, order authorizing the man to grant by easement a five-foot strip of land known as 38 Central Street to Brian P. Noonan and Amanda M. Noonan.
Make a motion that matter be referred to the Committee on Infrastructure and Public Lands.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item, a new petition is James L. McEwen, Boys and Girls Club of Woburn, for a special event permit for a road race and health walk at Charles Gardner Lane and along area streets on May 4, 2025.
Make a motion this special event permit is granted.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item, new petition, NSR Electric Company for grant of location at 57 Mill Street.
Make a motion that matter be referred to a public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item, 120 Commerce Apartments LLC for a special permit at 120 Commerce Way.
Make a motion that the matter be referred to a public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on the agenda, City of Woburn Special Permit for Municipal Use at 2 Henshaw Street, Unit 4F.
Make a motion that the matter is referred to a public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
On the petition by ANA Window Products Inc. for a special permit and amendment of a previously issued special permit at 7 Constitution Way.
Make a motion that matter is referred to a public hearing?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Woburn Apne Bazaar Incorporated for a special permit in modification of various special permits at 335 Washington Street.
Make a motion that matter be referred to a public hearing?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item is petition by Counsel Demers at all proposed zoning amendments for Section 2 definition of outdoor dining, Section 2 definition of restaurant fast food, Section 5.1 subsection 29, and notes to 5.1 table of use regulations.
Make a motion that the matter be referred to public hearing and referred to the planning board as well.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on the agenda, a new petition is 288 Mish Road LLC requests for minor modification of special permit dated November 21, 2023, to remove Condition Number 15 at 288 Mishwam Road. A communication dated March 11, 2025 was received from Devon P. Howe.
Make a motion that the communication be received may part of the permanent record?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to allow the petitioner to speak?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is the petitioner here?
Boy Detective Paulway.
Sure.
Mish Road LLC Devon Howe.
Bright Path Child Care Center.
Is that him?
Yes.
Folks, as I've said earlier, there's the committee room, the overflow room, the TV is set up. If you're more comfortable there, feel free to do so. You'll still be part of the process. How are you today, sir? If you'd just state your name and address, please?
Of course. Devon Howe with Beals Associates, 2 Park Plaza, Suite 200 in Boston.
You have the floor, sir.
Here on behalf of the owner and applicant, 288 Mishard LLC, we're making a request to the City Council to make a minor modification to the childcare facility, the Bright Path Childcare Facility located at 288 Mishwam Road. Really, the reason for the request is that the City Council, Condition 15, required that we go before the Traffic Commission to really try and get two signs, school zone signs, approved. We had first started this process with the Traffic Commission back in, it was August or September of last year, trying to get their approval on it. Really, our opinion on the matter was, well, it's, you know, a school to, you know, enlighten young children. It's really lower than the school-aged kids, and they would be dropped off at the front entrance, would be guided by parents. We weren't really sure and didn't really believe that it would necessarily be the most appropriate application for school zone signage. I don't speak on behalf of the Traffic Commission, obviously, but I think there was some concern on, you know, the volume of traffic on that road. Was this even necessary? And really, we thought the best path forward would be to come back before City Council and to make a minor modification to the decision. With that, I'll turn it back over to the City Council.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Abou.
So, the council might remember when we were deliberating this, we had also had an experience deliberating about the Goddard School, which is in a much different location than this particular school, which is almost a commercial use. The children will be literally taken into the building by their parents. So, I don't take any exception to removing the signs out of the conditions, but I'd like to hear from my fellow city councilors about it. But personally speaking, I think it's fine for this area.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel Aviola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe I was the one that actually came up with the condition, but I'd be all right with removing it and allowing them to use this.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to return to the regular order?
Second.
Motion and a second to return to regular order, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion.
Make a motion that the modification be granted?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second to grant the order, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda we have is public hearing. City of Woburn for a special permit under Woburn zoning ordinance, Section 5.1 subsection 79 for municipal use for the City Hall Annex at 6 Common Street. Communication dated February 26, 2025 was received from John Cashell, the planning director.
Make a motion.
Further, a communication dated March 4, 2025 was received from City Solicitor Mark J. Salvati regarding department head reports.
Make a motion that communications are received may part of the permanent record?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Good evening.
How are you, sir?
For the record, City Solicitor Mark Salvati for the City of Woburn. I think most of you are familiar with the building. It's about 50 feet that way. If there are any questions, we'd be glad to take them. We did receive a letter from our neighbor Pastor Fred asking for a commitment to a few things that we will give him in the future. If he speaks, that'll be why, I think. So, we're pretty far into it, and I think I provided a plan that shows what the layout will be. Basically, Building Department, the Engineering Department, and Conservation Commission will come over, and those will free up space here for other uses. So, with that, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Any questions for Attorney Salvati?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Second.
A motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward.
Make a motion. Oh, I will draw.
Yep. Pastor Freddie, how are you tonight?
I'm doing well, how are you doing, sir?
Good to see you.
Well, good evening, everyone. I am, for those who do not know, I am, my name is Freddie Bafukam. I'm the senior pastor. the senior pastor of the church, which is, I guess, that way? A little disoriented, but it's the big white building. The church that started the town back in 1642. So we, I had a good meeting with the mayor about the city use of the building next door. The only thing that we wanted to make sure, which the mayor assured me that will be the case, is that there are some restrictions upon that building because our church sold the land upon which that building is built many, many years ago, and we discovered that there were some restrictions that the church had secured to be placed upon that building, on any building that will be built on that lot, so that it does not interfere with the mission and purpose of the church. So some of those restrictions mainly are that it will be used only for office use, and that ensures that, two things, it ensures that the building is not sold or to some kind of an establishment that the church won't want next to it. It also ensures that the building is used during those times and days when it does not interfere with the church services, so office use is fine. And there were also some restriction on the actual dimensions of the building, the height and so forth. And so, you know, that to ensure that it does not block the visibility or affect the visibility of the church building, which we want to remain a beacon of the Christian faith here in Woburn. So that was that, and the mayor assured me that these things will be honored. But I just wanted to make sure that you all are aware of that as well, and we've requested that, you know, as the solicitor mentioned, that that would be given to us in writing to ensure that, you know, future leadership at City Hall, future leadership at the church remaining the same, on the same page.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, Counselor Mercer Bruin?
I was just wondering if we had a copy tonight of what those restrictions would be, because I highly recommend that it be conditioned.
The city solicitor would have them because they're part of, I think they're listed in the registry of deeds.
And we have a...
I'll be happy to provide a copy to later on.
Oh, that's not, yeah, no, the city solicitor, it sounds like you've worked it all out.
Yeah.
I just want Attorney Salvati to make sure that we memorialize it tonight as a condition. So I don't, I'm trying to...
I would say you can condition it on honoring the restrictions set forth in the deed. They're in the chain of title.
Okay.
I don't think we need to condition it.
I'm going to make a motion that we condition it with the language that's in the deed to protect everybody. I would think you would agree with that, Attorney Salvati, yes?
I do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Eight for one against. Thank you. That passes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can you explain exactly, Mark, what is in the language for the deed? I just want to make sure that we have everything that's written clearly so that nobody misunderstands what it says.
Office use only during regular business hours, no increase in the height of the building.
Okay, those three things.
There are a few more things there. I think there are about six or seven different points, but those are the ones that we care about.
Okay, and the others you don't?
No, we do, but they are...
Could you please speak into the microphone, there's people listening next door and online.
No, I'm saying that we do care about all the restrictions that the church had secured back then, but these are the most relevant ones that I mentioned, but they're certainly not the only ones on there. And we just want to be good stewards, you know, of, you know, what previous generations secured for the church. We want to make sure that we preserve those. And I don't think any of those restrictions will preclude or prevent City Hall from doing what? From using it for municipal use. But we do want to make sure that all of them are honored.
No, absolutely, and I, just so you understand what Counselor Mercer Bruin was, she's actually trying to protect you. She wants to make sure that we discuss all of this so that when we leave tonight, if we pass it, that it's not something that's just going to get pushed aside and then unfortunately might be said, "No, we never said that."
Absolutely, no, I get that. Thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, and I would love to know, to make sure that the records that the solicitor is mentioning do match what we have on file, which last I checked, they did.
Okay, and on the deed, all the other ones, so there was what, six or seven, Mark?
Yes, something like that.
I think it might be six, but I don't remember. I think three were irrelevant to this proceeding, but we will abide by whatever's in the deed.
Okay, so everything is in the deed, so if we go by the language that Counselor Mercer Bruin said, then we should be okay?
Yes, I agree.
All right, thank you.
Clerk Higgins, are we good, or do we need to amend that motion and clean it up?
I think you could potentially maybe make reference to the deed book and page number that the city solicitor could provide to me later?
That's doable.
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing and grant the special permit?
Second.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Higgins.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we have is the City of Woburn for a special permit for municipal use for a fire station at 38 Central Street. A communication dated February 26th, 2025 was received from John Cashell, the Planning Director, as well as a further communication dated March 4th, 2025 from City Solicitor Mark Salvati regarding Department Head Reports.
Make a motion that communications are received made part of the permanent record?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Again, Solicitor Salvati for the petition of the City of Woburn. I have the Building Commissioner, the mayor is here as well, and the chief. If there are any questions for them. I believe everyone has seen the plan. We did obtain variants, two variances the other night, last week, from the Board of Appeals for side and front setback, so that we could go within 12 feet on both of those sides. And we do have an agreement, which is a, was at the beginning of the meeting that was mentioned, that we're going to provide an easement to the neighbor, five-foot strip, because he's basically, would lose his driveway otherwise, and he's been a good neighbor, probably. And we hope that he look favorably on that. So with that, I'd be glad to take any questions about the building or the use.
Counselor Papalatto?
Thank you, President Dillon. The Green Street area, that's in my ward, and there's a lot of excitement about this. I got a lot of calls last year when there was no swimming there, and now that it's the Splash Park, there's a lot of excitement, so.
Billy, we're on the...
We're on the fire station. Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies.
That's next.
Fire station. You're good?
Good.
Anyone else? Counselor Mercer Bruin?
Through the chair to Attorney Salvati, do we have any more information on the conditions about the easement so we can include that as a condition?
Well, I guess you could condition on the approval of the matter that I put forth tonight, that the easement gets signed and recorded. I think that would be sufficient.
Okay, sounds good. I'll make that motion when the time comes.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to open a public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward, state your name and address, please. How are you, sir?
Hi, I'm Brian Noonan. I live at 40 Central Street, right next door to the Fire Department. I'm in favor of the project and the city's request for the building being built. I think the project will have a very positive impact on the city and the hard-working firefighters. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Brian.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward.
Make a motion that...
Hold on one second. No, I think we're...
You were going to say there's a delay, right?
Yeah, there's a delay, so it's about a minute.
Oh, okay.
They don't hear it till about a minute afterwards.
Not quite live TV.
It's okay, you're ready to practice. You're ready to go.
There was no one, but I was just informed by the Woburn Public Media, there's only a five-second delay, not a confirmation.
Thank you, Clerk.
I can imagine.
Seeing no one else?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, and I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
I'll make a motion that the special permit is granted, provided that the easement is executed.
Second. Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on the agenda, we have the City of Woburn for a special permit for municipal use to construct a bathroom building at the Spray Park area at 60 Green Street. A communication dated February 26th, 2025 was received from John Cashell, the Planning Director. Further, a communication dated March 4th, 2025 was received from City Solicitor Mark Salvati regarding Department Heads Reports.
Make a motion that the communications are received made part of the permanent record?
Second.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Good evening again.
Attorney Salvati, you're at the floor.
So because it's a building requiring a building permit, it is a municipal use under the code which requires a special permit, even though it seems kind of minor. But, so we're asking for the special permit mainly for the bathrooms, the new bathrooms in the rear. I think you have the plan on that. Again, the Commissioner is here. Rory is here if needed, and I'd be glad to take any questions on this petition.
Any questions? Counselor Papalatto?
As previously stated, there's a lot of excitement around this, and I know that the goal is to have this thing up and running somewhere this summer, I think.
Correct.
Is that where we are?
Yep.
So it's just a heads up that there's a lot of calls, there's a lot of excitement generated from this, so I support this.
Thanks. Hope it gets well-used.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward. How are you tonight, Chris?
Hello, my name is Jesse Weinstein. I live at 33 Vernon Street. I'm just speaking in favor of the project. As a soon-to-be-new parent, I am very grateful to have public restrooms available at the Splash Pad. Thank you for moving forward with the project.
Very good, thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak on this matter?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
The motion and the second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion that the special permit be granted?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Attorney Salvati.
Next item on the agenda, we have the Shellzie Glenbook LLC for a special permit under Section 5.1 subsection 56, Section 7.3, Section 9, Section 15, to build in addition to the management office building, as well as to the maintenance building, at 200 Bedford Road. A communication dated February 21st, 2025 was received from John Cashell, the Planning Director, and those are the communications.
Make a motion that the communication be received made part of the permanent record?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Okay, for the record, Attorney Joseph Tavi, Reuben and Rudman, 500 Unicorn Park Drive in Woburn, here on behalf of the applicant. So the petition is seeking special permits under 51.56, 7.3, Section 9, Section 15, to allow for a small addition to the management office of about 188.2 square feet, which will be used to accept packages from UPS, FedEx, and Amazon. In addition, there's an existing 722-square-foot maintenance building, and the applicant's looking to add 1,680 square feet for storage, community meeting rooms, and a gymnasium for residents of the apartments. This apartment complex was built in the mid-'70s, early-'80s, and back then, those weren't common amenities in these type of developments. We want to, we're asking for the continued use of the non-conforming structures' use in parking spaces, work within the groundwater protection district, and the area along the brook as shown on the plan is in the flood plain, but there's no work being done on the flood plain. So this property is in the R3 zoning district, which allowed for the original development. The property is known as Glenbook Estates, located at 200 Bedford Road in Woburn, is owned by the Shellzie family, longtime residents of the City of Woburn, and supporters of many charitable ventures in the city. The property is at the corner of Bedford and Cambridge Road, contains 9.1 acres, and as I stated, was built in the '70s, early-'80s for this Glenwood Book Estates development. The property contains 176 apartment units located in 11 buildings. There's an office building, a maintenance building, a tennis court, a pool area, and there's 274 parking spaces. So the existing total building area covers approximately 16.9% of the site, and the buildings are approximately 188,212 square feet. This proposal doesn't call for any increase in units, any increase in any of the apartment buildings. So the portions of the site that are, these improvements are proposed, is in the middle of the site, there is a existing management office, and there's a patio area in a small grassy area that they're looking to build a small addition to accept, you know, packages so it'll be secure for residents that live in the development, about 188.2 square feet. The exterior, the addition, will be brick, and it'll match the existing office building. The maintenance building is on Bedford Road, you've probably passed it hundreds of times as you travel down Bedford Road. There's a driveway outside that building that can accommodate two vehicles. The community, this will be an addition to make this into a community building for meeting rooms, small gym area, and storage for the residents. It'll be one-story, 1,680 square feet, wood-framed, and it'll match the existing maintenance building. The balance is the tennis court there now behind the large screen of Aphrodite, Aphrodites, and that's going to be converted to a six-car parking area with access from Bedford Road. Both of these additions, as you can see from the plan, are very minimal. So on February 21st, the Planning Department forwarded a favorable recommendation on this application. I'd just like to read from that report. This recommendation takes into consideration that the subject apartment complex is one of the most attractive, well-maintained, and landscaped in the city, together with the fact that this application only costs regarding 1,868.2 square feet of building space to the existing 198,212 square feet of building area, while maintaining 82.63% open space for the entire apartment complex. So that's the summary of the proposal. In the event the council feels it's appropriate to move on this tonight, I'd like to submit a proposed condition which incorporates the plan of record, the typical condition, one, that you see, the number two, a proposed finding that the proposed use is consistent with the past use of the property and not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood.
I make a motion to accept and make part of the permanent record?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Thank you, Lindsey.
Thank you. Thank you. You're good attorney, Tobby?
Yes, that includes our presentation.
Any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, Joe.
Hi.
Uh, as Ward Alderman, um, I have no issue with this petition. They've been very good neighbors, as you've said. We've had no issues, and when I say that, I can honestly say, no issues. Um, for a structure with so many apartments, we really have had no problems at all, which is really wonderful. Um, so I don't have a problem with moving this tonight. I like that you did this, thank you. This makes it much easier. And, um, forward, not that this is going to affect this particular petition, but just, I guess, in our minds, Counselor Viola, myself, our wards, connect right at this intersection where we will be, where this particular property is, um, in a budding intersection for the Mastart-funded major improvement project that hopefully will be taking place in, what, the next year or so? Yeah, which is really wonderful. So, uh, we don't have more details about that or what land might need to be taken, but, uh, once again, this doesn't have to do with the petitioner, but it's right there at his property. So I have no problems with this whatsoever, and I think that we should move this tonight.
Hey, thank you.
Counselor DeMambro.
Attorney Tobby, I commend, uh, the Shelzy family on those apartments. They're, it's, they're beautiful, they keep that property well-maintained. You'd be hard-pressed to find a candy wrapper over there. Um, so I am in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
I'll make a motion that the council makes the following finding, that the proposed use by the petitioner is consistent with the past use of the property, and is not substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood.
Second.
The motion and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Make a motion that the special permit's granted with the condition as outlined.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda, we have is Tesla Inc. for a special permit to install four Tesla Supercharge cabinets and various equipment at 300 Mishawam Road. A communication dated today was received from, um, Jeff Holland from Senior Site from Dewberry Engineers, requesting a continuance on this matter.
Make a motion that communication is received and made part of the permanent record?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion that the public hearing is open?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward.
Make a motion that the public hearing is continued to the regular meeting of the City Council on May 6th.
Second, and on the motion?
Yes, Counselor Mercer.
Um, I just want to remind the council that, uh, there are some significant challenges with this, um, as it is not allowed in the current zoning. The petitioner is aware.
Good. The motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on the agenda, we have is Nstar Electric Company for grantification to install approximately five-feet of conduit at Mishawam Road for service to 300 Mishawam Road. There's no communications, but I did speak to, um, Jacqueline Duffy, the, the, um, Everstors representative before the meeting, and she was fine with continuing this to the next meeting with the related petition before it.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward. Seeing no one?
Make a motion that the public hearing be continued to the regular meeting of the City Council on May 6th.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on the agenda is another petition by Tesla for a special permit to install three Tesla Supercharger cabinets and 12 Tes- Tesla charge posts and related equipment at 425 Washington Street. A communication dated today was, um, from Jeff Holland, the Senior Site acquisition, requesting a continuance of this matter.
Make a motion that communications are received made part of the permanent record?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward. Seeing no one?
Make a motion that the public hearing be continued to the regular meeting of the City Council on May 6th.
Second.
Second, and on the motion?
Yes, Counselor Mercer.
Wanted to make the council aware, I did meet with the petitioner, uh, and Commissioner Quinn, um, at the site with the folks, um, that are representing Tesla. Uh, there are certainly some challenges, um, that they have to overcome as it relates to buffer zone and many, many other things. Um, and they're going back to the drawing board to see if they can do that. So that's by way of an update for everybody.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on the agenda is President Dillon, prayer request of the mayor for the proposed zoning amendment for a protected use accessory dwelling units, and adding 1A and 1B to Section 5.1 Table of Use Regulations related to accessory dwelling units. A communication dated March 12, 2025, was received from John Cashell, the planning director, and those are the communications.
Make a motion that communications are received made part of the permanent record?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Attorney Salvati, welcome back.
Evening again. Um, as I think everyone knows about this, uh, ordinance that came down from the state, uh, requiring the, uh, ADU be adopted, um, we have drafted some language. Uh, it mirrors, uh, the 760 CMR that the state has put forth. Um, it's fairly involved, and there's, uh, definitely a lot of questions, so my suggestion is, uh, if there's any questions tonight, we could take them, but that it go to committee. Um, we did have a, um, hearing with the Planning Board who did, uh, send a favorable recommendation with some potential, uh, language changes, mainly the definition of a principal use as compared to a single-family dwelling as compared, sorry, a single-family dwelling compared to a principal dwelling. So we would like to vet those in, uh, in committee if possible. So with that, I'd be glad to take any questions on the petition.
Yes, Counselor DeMamro.
Solicitor Salvati, is there a deadline that we're up against in terms of adopting our own ordinance to comply with the law?
Not really, but the sooner the better, because it has been adopted by the state, so technically, someone could file for them now.
Okay.
Um, you know, that probably won't happen, especially the people that I've talked to, they want this in place, to see if there's anything that's going to help or hurt them. But, uh, I'd say the sooner the better, but...
And I know, I know we've, I think during the Planning Board meeting, there were, there was reference about there's constantly changing guidelines on how to implement this law?
There is, and that might even occur after adoption, uh, who knows? But, uh, you know, I, I think they jumped in, the state jumped in pretty quick on this, uh, but we're gonna, we have to abide, so we're, uh, we're starting the process.
Okay, as the, as the Chair of the Ordinance Committee, I think we'll, I'll recommend that this gets pushed out to May 6th, just so that we can get the up-to-date guidelines and work out any language that we want to customize it for Woburn.
I would agree.
I think that'd be prudent, Mr. President.
That's a good idea. Counselor Mercer.
I couldn't agree more. Thank you both for your recommendations and for the work that's gone into it already. Um, I am, the Chair knows, looking into a couple of other cities and towns that have used some language that we may benefit from that has passed muster with the state, so I look forward to our next committee meeting.
Counselor DeMamro, please.
Attorney Salvati, I know in the Planning Board meeting, there was, you know, a language type thing, and it was, it was being left up to interpretation. Um, you know, I, I have, I have concerns when it comes into interpretation. I don't like fuzzy mouth, I don't like fuzzy language. You know, I like it direct and to the point. There's no gray area. Um, and if we don't tighten the language up on this, I can only imagine how can, this can get out of control, and, and people with creative minds will take complete advantage of interpretation. So, you know, I really want...
The Building Commissioner would agree with you on that one.
Yeah, I, uh, I definitely want to tighten up, single-family, primary dwelling, what zones they're allowed in, uh, you know, if, if there's any Mickey Mouse, and when it comes to a condo, if you can subdivide it and add an ADU on each side. These are things that are all going to have to be tightened up, because I just see this thing taking on a life of its own, and, uh, I don't think it's going to be fair to the residents of Woburn. I'm not necessarily sure that they're aware of what's coming down the pipe, but this, this, this could turn into one hell of a creature. So, I appreciate all the work on this, and I look forward to the, the meeting in May. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Viola?
Mr. President, uh, Counselor Salvati, I'm not sure if you're aware, but I think the state did update on their website yesterday, uh, on the ADUs, so there may be changes that we don't know yet.
Here we go.
Counselor Campbell?
Yeah, hi, Attorney Salvati. Um, on the changes, actually, what you suggested, can you get those for us so that we can see them and know what's going on?
Yeah, I...
With those changes?
We had a few discussions. We actually had a somewhat of a committee with the, with the Building Commissioner, so they're being vetted a little bit on our end, and then we'll, we'll, we'll send them out well before the, uh, committee meeting.
Okay, um, because as Counselor DeMamro had said, um, first of all, it's really unfortunate that the state is doing this. Uh, really, it's pushing it right on to the cities, which in my view, and some other counselors, it's really not fair, um, to the city and the residents for this to happen. Um, so anything that we can do to minimize the negative effect that it's going to have on the residents, that's obviously what we all want to do. So I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Papalatto? Thank you. Um, is the state requirement R1-only, or is it broader than that?
It's broader than that. What the state is saying is that wherever a single-family dwelling can be built, an ADU is allowed. So if our four residential districts and the S1 district all allow for a single-family home, those are districts are automatically by right, by implication, any, any structure, single-family dwelling in a, uh, non-residential district that's legally nonconforming is a single-family structure.
Was it, was it R1-only at one point, and it changed, or it's always been that way?
No, it was, it was kind of the way they worded it, because they put "single-family" district in, in the CMR, in the code. They used that language, "single-family district", but when they define it, it says wherever a single-family is allowed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Counselor DeMamro.
No, it just, I think, I think their language use on that is teeing up what we heard as a state recommendation from the State Commission that was reviewing to get rid of the R1 designation altogether. They're going to leave it, you know, vague enough so that it, the shoe fits when that comes down the pike. So just something to keep in mind as well.
Scary.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just from the Chair, we have full chambers, this is a good time to perhaps say, "Do your homework, go online. You'll see, this is a state mandate, not just to Woburn, throughout the whole Commonwealth." And you really should get online and see what it, impact it has on everyone. So with that said...
Thank you, Chairman.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward, state your name and address, please. Ken, how are you tonight?
Fantastic. Great to see you, President Dillon.
Thank you.
Counsel, I appreciate all you guys, your time, your patience.
Mr. Parley, could you please identify yourself with a record and your address?
Ken Parley, 5 Marion Street, North Woburn. Um, just want to advocate, this is a blue-collar bill, it's a senior bill. Um, I know there was some concerns, um, that Councilmember Campbell, uh, said, but I see this as a way for families to be able to grow with their property, and I just kindly ask that, when this goes to committee, uh, if I could have some citizen participation, uh, in that, um, because that, um, as, uh, Councilmember DeMamro, there's some, um, sharp developers out there, and so, and I'd like to be a part of the, uh, conversation so that you're seeing it from my side as well, to ensure this is good for residents. This is going to be a great thing, middle housing. Um, I appreciate you guys' time, and if you could chalk me in there, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Kenny.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, sir, come forwards. Please come up so the people on TV can see.
You have to please...
Oh, turn the volume up. Thank you, sir. Sir, are you, is it the, I'm sorry.
The anterior volume?
Okay.
The microphones?
Maybe everyone...
Just got to lean in on the microphone.
Yeah, lean in.
Can we go now or not?
Hold on, Justin.
Wait till the clerk...
Got to wait until the clerk's back.
Thank you.
Oh, is she going to the other room?
Yeah.
Yeah, just to check the sound.
Wait for her so she can do the minutes. Or the journal, I should say.
Questions?
Sure. That's a night.
Same old.
Half a minute.
Don't fix it if it's not broken.
Thank you.
Well, he's got to lean into our mics.
I'm not going to make trouble with this.
It's not, I'm sorry.
If you all could just please lean into the microphone when you're speaking, it'll be helpful for those, uh, watching at home or in the next room.
Thank you, Clerk Higgins. Thank you, sir.
All right. Um, Christopher Sylvia, 13 Bennett Street. There's a lot of people here, so I'll just take this brief. Um, I support this, I think we should do it, I think we should adopt it, and I think we should go with the principal structure, because that leaves, you know, that's, I think that's the best language and the most consistent. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward. Seeing no one?
Make a motion that the public hearing is continued to the regular meeting of the Council on May 6th, and that the matter is referred to the Committee on Ordinance, Charter, and Rules.
Second.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
President Dillon, I just want to make a note that for the next public hearing, there are people in the next room that probably want to speak on this matter.
Sure, so give them a little bit of time.
Correct, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Clerk Higgins.
Next item on the agenda, we have is the Gustavino Realty LLC for proposed zoning amendment for the Central Square Overlay District, as well as 13 parcels of land to be included in the Overlay District. A communication, communication dated March 12, 2025, was received from John Cashell, the planning director.
Make a motion that the communication be received made part of the permanent record?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
There's also a couple of the communications. Um, there was one, further communication was dated March 16, 2025, was received from Carol Sights, the Chair of the Woburn Historical Commission, regarding the Overlay District, as well as a communication dated March 17, 2025, was received from John Heslin, 36 Clinton Street.
Make a motion that those said communications be made part of the permanent record?
Second, and on the motion? Uh, Mr. Heslin specifically asked that his be read into the record, so, um, because he made the request. It is rather lengthy, I'll try to, um...
You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, members of the City Council, I regret, I am unable to attend the March 18 City Council meeting to speak on the Gustavo Realty zoning amendment listed on the meeting agenda. Given the importance of this issue, please read my comments into the record. My name is John Heslin, I reside at 38 Clinton Street. I'm a third-generation Central Square resident, having grown up in the house I now own and live in. The proposed entrance to this development is just 1,000 feet from my home, so this is a personal issue for me. As they say, I have skin in the game. I believe Central Square is the best section of Woburn, and I want to keep it that way, which is why I'm involved in this matter. As I stated at the recent Planning Board meeting, I cannot argue against raising property taxes and then argue against all residential development projects. I certainly can't be in favor of residential developments in every section of the city but my own. I approach every development with an open mind. In my view, this vote isn't about whether to allow residential development in Central Square. It's about community involvement. Approving the Overlay District gives the community a voice in the plans for the property, ensuring the developer includes community benefits and improvements under our mitigation regulations. Denying it, denying it would stop the current plans but allow the developer to shift focus to other projects that require no community input or benefits. Since I'm unable to attend, I'm basing my comments on the proposal the Planning Board unanimously approved with conditions on March 11th over the... While I don't agree with their anti-development stance, I do share many of their concerns, and will address them here. Traffic. As council members may recall, I've experienced traffic issues firsthand, including multiple accidents at Beach and Clinton. Additionally, living near the four-way stop at Clinton and Mishwom, I have decades of experience with traffic backups and blocked driveways. This is not theoretical for me. Traffic delays are primarily caused by three factors: school traffic, commercial traffic during peak hours, commuters avoiding the 93-95 interchange. While residential complexes may add to the volume alone, they don't generate mass traffic at the same times a day. Since the three factors I mentioned will continue to exist, so too will traffic. The best we can do is better manage the flow of that traffic. Denying the Overlay District will keep traffic conditions as they are, ensuring continued frustration for everyone. Approving it will bring mitigation measures like the reconfiguration of the Wilcox-Maine and Eaton intersection, adding turning lanes, AIM traffic lights, and so on. Flooding. In parts of Hart Street has been a problem for as long as I can remember. If this issue were easy to solve, it would have been addressed by now. Denying the Overlay District won't solve it. However, approving it would require a stormwater management plan to be put in place for the development's 6.2-acre property. Additionally, the developer is willing to help the city and find a solution to the flooding. Neighborhood character, quality of life is the next heading. When presenting his plans, John Tachi explained that students from the hurled Wyman currently cut through his property to access the Boys and Girls Club. I was expecting he would discuss a wall or fence to prevent this, but instead, the plan calls for increasing student safety by creating a walkway based on the student's chosen route. If you're not impressed by a developer who creates a design that takes into account choices made by our community, it's elementary school children, I'm not sure what would impress you. The proposed expansion of Wyman Green protects us older residents as well. The Lower Street-Main Street merge, I've driven this road for over 40 years, removing it will eliminate what I call the Massachusetts Merge, similar to the 95 North off ramp at Main Street. Cars speed up and merge in front of those cars, and so on. This plan will clearly be an aesthetic improvement for the area. An honest look at this section of Central Square reveals a harsh reality that no one denies, the area is in poor condition. At the last week's Planning Board meeting, the Chair asked why the homes are so rundown, given that the petitioner now owns them. A couple of years, I had an opportunity to visit one of the homes before the petition to purchase, and I was shocked by its condition, no functional plumbing or running water. I'm not sure what level of upkeep you should expect from someone intending to demolish the property. Asking a new owner to invest in a house meant for demolition is like asking someone to repair a car before sending it to the junkyard. Renderings of the projects often resemble Thomas Kinkade paintings, glowing with warm light, but there's no doubt that removing the listed houses and expanding Wyman Green will beautify the neighborhood. The redesigned Wyman Green will also increase passive recreational space to the community, along with a walking link to the green. I've been before, I've seen before and after photos that show the amazing transformation of the Gustavo Tile Company, which is an example of how Mr. Tachi revitalizes spaces. Finally, a word about my experience communicating with the Tachi Group. In February of last year, I met with the city engineer on a different matter. Before I left, I mentioned my concern for Central Square. Apparently, he mentioned my name to the Tachi Group, and in May, they invited to meet with them. I'm no one special, I have no money or political clout, I was simply a neighbor with concerns, and at that meeting, subsequent community meeting in July, and in every conversation I've had with them, I found them to be active listeners. I urged the council to approve the Overlay District to revitalize Central Square, so the children of today and the future can one day share fond memories of this space, as many in our community have long been doing for the past week. Thank you for your time. So, again, I was specifically asked to read that into the record, which I did. I also want to make a motion that I, or perhaps through the Chair, Clerk Higgins, I have received well over 40 emails in opposition to this. I wasn't asked to read those, but I want to make sure that I do due diligence with them and send them along to you, if you have not already received them. They may be duplicates.
I have not.
Okay.
I probably haven't.
Yep, I will, and, yeah, at last count, it was 40. So, somewhere in that range. So, I will make sure that I send them to you for the public record.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There's a motion on the floor, I believe?
Nope.
Nope, okay, good.
I think it's just the petitioner.
The petitioner, okay.
Okay, for the record, Joseph Tavi, Ruben and Redmond, 500 Unicorn Park Drive in Woburn, here on behalf of the applicant. I'd like to review where we are procedurally in this process. We're currently before the council on a proposed zoning amendment. As you know, before you can get to the special permit stage, zoning amendment has to be approved by the City Council. Once you get to the special permit stage, there were peer reviews, there were further public meetings of the proposed development. City Council held its initial public hearing on January 21st, got continued to February 18th, and here we are this evening. The proposed ordinance is currently in the Ordinance Committee for Review, waiting for the recommendation of the Planning Board, which was just received. So, this evening, all we're planning to do is to provide the City Council with an update. As you know, on March 11th, the Planning Board voted to send a favorable recommendation to the City Council to adopt the new Section 35 in the associated Overlay District. In making that recommendation, however, they included a revised version of the Overlay District, and also proposed edits and issues of concern that they had. We received the Planning Board recommendation yesterday, and would like to put together a detailed response to the recommendation and the proposed edits to submit to the council for review in the Ordinance Committee. The edits that we'll be presenting will include a reduction in the number of units, an increase in the number of onsite parking spaces, the elimination of all solar uses except for roof-mounted solar systems, a decrease in ground coverage, and an increase in landscape open space. So, we'd like to have some time to put that together, and we're looking to continue this hearing until April 15th, and then to meet with the committee in due course to review our response to the recommendation and proposed edits, along with our proposed overall edits to the Overlay.
Thank you. Any questions for Attorney Tavi? Yes, Counselor DeMamis?
Thank you, President Dillon. Attorney Tavi, I'm glad to hear that there's going to be some concessions, but I didn't hear about any height reductions, unless I missed that?
We're looking, we've heard all the comments and input, and we're looking at all of that.
Okay. I said this the last time, I'll say it again, it's too big, it's too dense, the parking issues are still the parking issues. I'd also like to see, as you're going back to the drawing board, making the, seeing a more mix of things in this area, as opposed to just apartment buildings and condos. Why can't we see a combination of maybe a couple of single-family homes, maybe a couple of two-family homes, along with, I understand the desire to do something bigger, I understand the financial implications of that, but it's also important to make sure we do something that does fit in this area. So, those are my comments, and, you know, hopefully, we'll see that, because as this stands here, I can't support it. But I, that's nothing new. Again, that's nothing new. I've said that since the beginning, so I hope that, I hope we can figure some way to get to the middle. I know that Counselor DeMamis, even though this isn't his ward, has been really working hard to come to some, some middle ground on this. This is President Dillon's ward, I hope, you know, that he'll weigh in and let us know how he's feeling about this as well. But at the end of the day, those things are very important to me, if anyone cares about my vote.
No, I think, you know, your comments are well-received, and I think it's to everyone's advantage to work together, to try to work something out. In October of 2023, Governor Healy commissioned...
That name keeps coming up.
I know. Commissioned a group to come up with ideas to promote affordable housing. And last month, this 100-page document was issued by that commission. And as you know, we've had MBTA Communities Act forced upon us, we've had ADLs forced upon us. If you go through and read this report, there are a number of suggestions in here, and I suggest everyone get a copy of this and read it, including increasing 40B to 12% and more, and those communities that increase it will get grants from the state for infrastructure improvements and other things. And there's probably a dozen different approaches in here to increase affordable housing. My point on this is that, under the overlay system, you know, we have a right to provide import, you have a right to control it more than what you've seen come from the state. And, you know, I suggest everyone get a copy of this and read it, so.
Again, are you done?
Just one more minute, because I know it's going to be a long night. And I also want to make sure everybody understands, you know, we haven't even really started work on this ordinance. We've had a couple of meetings, but there is a lot of work that, the heavy lifting is in the ordinance, because if we don't get the ordinance right, the special permit process won't really matter, because it could be easily appealed. So, we need to get this right. So, that's, I just want to make sure I make that point again. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor DeMamis?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Joe, my weekend was emails.
Yeah, I've heard.
About 90% of these folks got an email back either on Sunday or today from me.
I even got a few. I even received a few.
Yeah, so, the number-one concern of the neighbors is the density of this project. The number-one concern of mine is the density of this project, okay? And I learned a long time ago that an elected official shouldn't tell his constituents what they should think. They should listen to the constituents, and then... Do I want a beatification of Central Square? Yes. Do I want the row of houses that are dilapidated to be renovated, or new townhouses to be added there? Yes. I just, we cannot get past, right now, as currently constituted in this plan, Buildings A and B, as currently constituted. So, I'm hoping that you and Mr. Tachi come to us at ordinance with hopeful solutions to see if we can get something that's more amenable to the constituents. But when I tell you that 99.8% of the emails I received were all no, and maybe one was yes, and I think we've already heard from him. And, you know, John's a great guy, he's from Aruba writing emails, so, you know, but it's definitely a concern, and I wouldn't be doing my job as the Ward 4 counselor if I didn't extend to you exactly what I've been hearing from my constituents. So, I'm hoping at ordinance, we can get to somewhere that's amenable, so that we do move forward and something good goes in that we can all be proud of, but right now, the density is the major concern for me. Thank you, Mr. President.
Welcome. Counselor DeMambo?
Attorney Tavi, it's a delicate balancing act. I've said this numerous times in the city of Woburn. We're a city that has a lot of diversity, not only with our people but our structures. We've got commercial, we've got residential, we've got retail, we've got hotels. We've got the full monty in the city of Woburn. And it's always our job, and we get all of these plans, and we get all these projects that come into us, we always have the residents in mind, and we're always looking for ways to make things work and make things work better, through mitigation and infrastructure upgrades, and so on and so forth. Up in North Woburn, I'm sure we're all familiar with what would happen with the Santulo Project that was at 1042 Main Street. You wanted to build 12, 14 townhouses at the top of the hill, connected into Driftwood into Briarwood. The residents fought them tooth and nail. I bring that story up constantly, because, like you said, Governor Healy has mandated the MBTA 3A, by which she's looking for 2,631 apartments. That's not us, that's the State House. Now she's coming in with ADUs, basically attaching 900-square-foot maximum, you know, accessory dwelling unit, on top of underneath beside detached, to increase housing. We worry about, you know, 40Bs. I've been saying right along, I don't even put it past her, to increase our level. We're in safe hobbies right now at 10.68%, almost 11% we're at. We're supposed to be at 10%, that's the threshold. My fears is what you just stated earlier with that leaflet that you have, with those 100 pages. That was my fear, that she's looking to increase that to 13, 15%. Again, if we take and we do a Central Square Overlay District, we can work with our residents, we can work with our developer, City Council, our Commissioner, and we can put something palatable for everybody, that brings something together for the community, that does, takes and fixes all those broken teeth down on Main Street, those dilapidated houses. It doesn't have to be five stories high, but it accommodates our residents, and it beautifies that area, and it upgrades it. I know a lot of people don't like progress or growth, and they like the old school, but we're a long way from horse and buggy, and I don't think we're ever going to go back there. Farmlands are gone. We need to take and keep moving forward, but we have to do it all together. It scares me, and it makes me very uncomfortable, when the State House takes and mandates these types of laws. 40B is one of them, because of that Santulo Project, it was denied over and over again. He slapped a 40B on it, there's 168 units of apartments sitting up on top of that hill. Those residents took and sustained a two-year quarry from them taking and jackhammering and blasting down Blue Ledge till they got a flat plateau so they could build those buildings. It was an ongoing problem for several years, and that's what we have up there now. So, I'm not trying to scare anybody, I'm just trying to inform everybody that that actually happened. And now that you read that tonight, that was my fear, and I'm sure it's a very, it's a concern with all of us, because we don't want high density being forced upon us. We want to work, everybody work together, and that's my hope with this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Tavi, first, I want to thank, and I appreciate Mr. Tachi's willingness to kind of hold some meetings, communicate with both the council and the members of the community. So far, working with him has been, you know, a pleasure. I also agree that we need to revitalize Central Square, and something has to be done. I think all the members of the council here agree as well. But I'd also say that in my short time in the council, this issue specifically has garnered the most attention I've seen. I've been on the council for a year and a half. Counselor Ambassador Bruin referenced 40 emails, I think I got 40 emails yesterday. So, we are the voice of the people, and the people don't want this as it stands. I also don't support this project as it stands. We need to reduce... I'm willing to work with Mr. Tachi. Again, we do need to revitalize the area. I'd like to see that area cleaned up, but parking reduction, height of the buildings, density of the project, these are all things that need to be worked out. I hope Mr. Tachi will come to the table and continue to work with us, because I do think there is a solution that could be beneficial to the city, the residents in Central Square, and to Mr. Tachi. But there's a lot of work to be done here, and it's clear that the residents of Central Square and the residents of Woburn, who have weighed in, and pretty much everybody here right now is, I think I'd go on a whim and say is here for the Central Square Overlay District, do not want this project as it stands, and I don't think you're going to have much support on this council, I'm only one vote, but I don't think you'll have much for... I'm only one vote, but I don't think you'll have much vote on this council as it stands right now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who will we have next here? Counselor Papalato.
Thank you, President Dillon. So, my concerns are the same thing you've heard everywhere, the traffic, the parking, the density. But, the one thing that's disturbing to me is, all along, we heard, you've met with the neighbors, you've heard the neighbors' concerns, you've made some adjustments, that didn't line up with what we all saw all weekend long. There was a bevy of emails coming in and calls coming in. So, it's a little disappointing because it felt like there was more of a buy-in than what it turned out to be. So, unless there's significant changes here, I won't be supporting this, but I would like to see some work being done to get to a point where we can all be happy with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. As previous counselors stated, many issues with this project, from the density to the parking to the traffic that it's going to cause. Central Square is one of the gateways to the city of Woburn. We can't have it overpopulated, too dense. I mean, it's going to detract from the area. Not sold on the townhouses with eight units in each one. I think maybe we should look at that some more as well, maybe have some mixed use in there, maybe some businesses down the first floor. That area could use some type of business, some type of restaurants, maybe. And also, I do take exception with Mr. Tachi owning those houses down there that haven't been upkept in many years since he's owned them. If he's not going to take care of those houses that are down there, what makes me want to let him build this massive project? Is he going to take care of that? That's a serious question.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else? Before we open the public comment, just from the-
President?
Yes. I'm sorry. Counselor Favolo, you have the floor.
I'll be brief and play both sides. You're probably not going to clap for me. I share Counselor Demambo's concern about, if not this, then what? And he's already said enough. I don't need to go beyond there. And, as a police officer and police chief, which many of you guys know, I've had a great opportunity to build a 20-year relationship with Mr. Tachi, and I've always found him to be responsive. And I've been in those houses along the front for work and for things like that. The only renovation you can do there is to tear them down. I mean, they're just not fixable, what goes on in the majority of those buildings. I agree to work on density, to make it be a livable thing. I live there. That's my, I live a quarter mile away from there. I drive up Wyman Street every day. I use the cut-through every day on my way to work. I'd like to get somewhere with this and not abandon it, work with the neighbors. I had some really meaningful conversations today. When I get emails, I hate to type, so I just pick up the phone and call people. And I've had a great, great weekend, probably 20 phone calls, talked to a lot of people, met a lot of neighbors. And, you know, I'm, like Mr. Heslin said, I have skin in the game because that's my neighborhood. I walk by there with my wife. She makes me walk. And it's, I'm here for that. I just would love to get somewhere with this. It's obvious that we don't have the support here in the council, but I'd work with anybody to get anywhere so that the neighbors are happy. I'll make another 20, 40 phone calls tomorrow if I have to. My number's on the website. I'll answer the phone when it rings. But I think that if not this, then what? And we lived through that in North Woburn. We lived through that in another area that you're familiar with in Central Square that's going to come up at us soon. If not this, then what? And I think we should go back and all up our sleeves, three pizzas and a conference table, we can fix anything and make it work. I hear the community. I know they put me here. I'm blessed to be here. I want to work. I don't want to kill it. I want to try to make something happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell.
When it comes to overlay districts, as you know, Attorney Toby, I have not been very favorable towards them. I'm very cautious. And there's a reason for that. Usually, it's very large projects that are taking place. Usually, unfortunately, the density is always very large. The Woburn Mall project came in originally at the number of units that they wanted really was astronomical for the area. We were able to work with the petitioner, and we considerably got the number lower. So, I know that we can work with Mr. Tachi to get these numbers down so that the area isn't overpowered by having too many apartments or townhouses. My other concern with the overlay districts is, once it's done, once everything is planned, Mr. Tachi can then leave. He doesn't have to build the beautiful project that he shows us. The beautiful design, the wonderful trees, the houses, the, you know, all of it. He can then put in whatever fits in with what the wording has said. So, I mean, and just for an instant, years back, before Mr. Tachi actually bought his particular property, that area was going to be developed. A petitioner came forward, and it was approved for a special permit, and they went ahead and sold the property as soon as it was allowed. Thankfully, they decided not to move forward with that particular petition. So, I just want to make sure that everybody realizes what the overlay district means when it's coming before us. I also want to make sure that our wording, as all the other counselors are saying, we have to be very careful in what we're saying with the height, the densities, the setbacks, because it makes a difference. I don't believe that Mr. Tachi is going to sell this project afterwards. I'm just letting you know the potential of what could happen. So, the density needs to come down tremendously. If we need to use the Boys and Girls Club for parking, then over, then obviously, we have too many units to begin with. So, as of right now, I'm not supportive. And I will not support it until the density is brought down to a reasonable number. But I do believe the area does need rejuvenation in some way. And I also do believe that there's a way that we can work together with the residents, with Mr. Tachi, and obviously with the council to make something really beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Demambo.
Just one note. This past weekend, I did a lot of research on this, and I was, I read all the emails like we all did, and I received my fair share, probably 100 or so. I looked at when the highways were built. 128, 95 was built in 1951. 93 was built in 1957. We all know that both of those highways intersect our city. Traffic has increased at least 100 times fold since those days. Very little, very little, if any, modifications to those major highways has been done. I want everybody to realize, and I heard this from Chief Rufo, yes, we have a very diverse community when it comes to, again, commercial and residential and industry. And that's what kind of balances our taxes. But keep in mind, 250,000 to 300,000 cars come through our city on any given day. Waze and Google Maps help that along. Because every time there's a backup, and I live on School Street, every time there's a backup, they're looking to peel off and cut through to go one way or the other to avoid the traffic, the bumper-to-bumper, four lanes wide that's on those highways on every, any given day, including Saturdays. Some Sundays as well, because people are coming back from wherever they're vacationing. So, I just want everybody to keep in mind, it's not necessarily local traffic we're dealing with. It's the Commonwealth's traffic. And I suggest we should reach out to our legislators and have them start focusing on how they can take and help us with these highways. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Merser-Brown.
I just wanted to make, we got to open it up to the public, but I just want to make a couple of comments about, first of all, the references to 40B. Yes, 40B is a real thing, but we are at our threshold right now, and we should take comfort in that. I also want to make reference to, I think I already said this, if there's something that could be built there by right, believe me, nobody wants to come here. Nobody. Not that we're not a nice bunch, but nobody wants to get a special permit. They'd much rather do it by right. So, there's nothing there that is financially feasible that we need to be concerned about So, I want us to make decisions not based on fear, but based on what we believe to be right. I believe we've made decisions in this city in the past on fear that people have put into our brains. We need to make decisions that are good for this community and move on from there. And in terms of the Woburn Mall, I just want to make a brief comment. So, the nuances matter. The Woburn Mall is what's called a 40R. That is a friendly 40B. So, we worked hand-in-hand with the state on that development. Did we get it right? I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's, I don't think it's right. I think we had a set of rules that we had to follow, but, I'll say this, it did help us get to that magic number for 40B, along with a couple of other developments in the city. So, I'm asking everyone to keep those things in mind. And my final comment about the highway, that highway, as much traffic as it brings, is what brings the tax revenue to this city because people want to do business here. We are 10 minutes away from Boston. Location, location, location. So, I met someone this week who was telling me in her town, they still charge the same amount for commercial and residential. Can you imagine what your taxes would be like if we were doing that? We can only do that because people want to be here. So, yep, we got to put up with some of that stuff. I'm done on my soapbox. Thank you, President Dillon.
Thank you. Counselor Favolo.
30 seconds. When we stop public hearing, traffic's going to be a big issue. I just want to address last Friday. Last Friday was a perfect storm where Route 93 was closed at Spot Pond, north and south. There was a major gas leak in the middle of Mishawam and Beach and Clinton, and that intersection was closed. The city was gridlocked. It had nothing to do with the community, the occupants, and stuff like that. It was a perfect storm of crisis, which we've lived through a few here, when 128 was closed with the gas turnover and stuff. But just so we understand, Friday wasn't caused by anything other than a perfect storm of crisis. And I just say that because I'm sure everybody's going to bring it up as we go forward here. Friday, Friday needs an asterisk next to it, and we move forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Yes. Before we open the public hearing, if I may, just from the chair, clarify a couple things. This is my ward, but as my role as City Council President, I do not have the luxury to deliberate unless I give up the gavel. Many of you have received emails and calls from me on this matter. I have hours and hours and hours working with you, working with the developer, working with the developer's attorney, trying to get the information from the public, to the attorney, to the developer. So, my point in saying this is, I am involved, and before any final vote on the overlay, I will give up the gavel for the second time in my year and a half as City Council President. And express my opinions in this matter as well. But importantly, I wanted to do what happened here tonight, make sure that all my co-counselors here had the opportunity first. But, this is far from over tonight, so, as they say, stay tuned for me. You'll hear from me later. So, we have a motion on the floor to open the public hearing in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward.
If you could please-
If you will, please state your name, address, and sign in. That would be great help. Thank you so much. Mr. Curran, how are you tonight?
Good, thank you. My name is John Curran. I live at 2 Wyman Street. I'm a direct abbot to the project. I'm a Central Square kid. I'm a Boys and Girls Club kid, and I'm opposed to this project in its current form. I, you know, I stand here not only as an abbot, and as a lifelong Woburn resident, and someone who's lived next to that property for 58 years, I can tell you that I spent a lot of time on that property, sometimes not doing such great things before Woburn Thanksgiving games with some of my buddies, but played baseball over there when I was a kid. And if you hit the ball on the roof of Gustavino's property, it was a homerun. If you hit it over, it was an out. I never got an out. So, that makes me a good ballplayer. That means I never hit it over the roof. But, I have a lot of great memories over at that property. But as, I'm not just an abbot to the property. I'm also a lifelong municipal official. I've been a chief executive officer of three different towns, and I understand there's a housing crisis in the state. I understand that change is coming, whether you like it or not. You can be steamrolled by it, or you can try to take control of it. So, I understand those dynamics. It would be somewhat hypocritical of me to say that I'm completely opposed to anything happening on that property. But, I'd like to call out some of the issues that I have, because this is a public hearing about, about the zoning. And I read through the zoning, and you have to bear with me if some of these things have already been changed. I think they have, but I just want to call out a few sections in the zoning that I think should be addressed. One at 34.3 in the zoning is the authority, which is granted to the City Council, which has been the tradition in Woburn, having been in other communities. Sometimes I wonder if it shouldn't be given to the planning board because they have more experience in this area. But I don't think that's a battle that I'm going to win in the city of Woburn. So, but, more importantly, in the authority, there is, there is a provision to grant waivers for dimensional and use. So, I'm basically giving the authority to the City Council to waive any, a different type of accessory use and also dimensional requirements, which basically says you can put anything you want there. I don't know if that language is still in there. If it is, it should be taken out. The dimension and density include, it should include the parking height, that's 34.6. And by the way, Lindsay, I did, I sent you these notes. I emailed them to you two minutes ago.
Thank you very much.
So, I'd like to make them part of the permanent record, if that's possible. The height, in the zoning ordinance, it's written up so that the height of the garage use would not be part of, part of the measurement for height. I don't think that should be in there. Another thing that you probably find me and the minority on is that in the planning board, they said that they wanted a 20-foot setback on Main Street. I disagree with that. I think it should be a 10-foot setback, and I'll tell you why, because that's a business neighborhood. If you want to preserve the integrity of Central Square, it should remain the way it was intended and the way it was built out with the houses closest to the street. It's not a suburban neighborhood. The houses should not be 20 feet off the street. They should be closer to the street. That would preserve the integrity of that neighborhood, which I think is the goal of everybody in this room. I don't think that the, there should be more than three stories in height. I'm not a big fan of garden-style apartments. I don't think that they would be, they would be fit in with this neighborhood. If they are, if you do build garden-style apartments in the back, and I hope you can't see them because they're ugly. The other issue is, I think you've changed this as well, there should be no, the solar, it should just be roof solar, no carports or canopies, because I have a feeling they would end up right in my backyard, and they might produce energy, but those things is ugliest then. So, two other things that aren't zoning-related that I'd like to address. One is Lowell Street. So, I don't know if you can, you probably can't do it here in the context of zoning, but I don't think Lowell Street should be allowed as an access or egress, nor should do, I think it should be allowed as an emergency access or egress, and I'll tell you why. Mr. Tachi does a great job of keeping his property. He's meticulous about keeping it, so much so that Saturday mornings, I hear the- He's meticulous about keeping it, so much so that Saturday mornings, I hear the leaf blowers going. And I'm not going to complain because he does such a great job of taking care of that property. He's done an excellent job with that building. But as far as that Lowell Street connection goes, there's a court case associated with that. There's myself and the neighbors fighting with him to keep that closed, and one, a family member of his lives right next door there, and they drive through there every day. That will not stop if that is kept as an emergency entrance. And I think because it sounds like the plan would be to take down the old fire station and move the intersection over, that would also allow you to have access from the Boys and Girls Club. So there would be two means of access and egress to that property. So I don't think there's any need to go out onto Lowell Street. And I also remind you that the zoning law says that you cannot exit into a residential neighborhood from a commercial neighborhood if you have access through a commercial entrance, which they do, which is Main Street. So I would be opposed to any type of access out onto that street. And then the only other thing I'd like to remind you of is there's some great proposals that include closing the one side of the Wyman Green, which I'm not opposed to, I think it's a great proposal, but again, it's not part of this zoning. So if you pass the zoning, it doesn't mean that those things are going to happen. And also, a lot of these things probably can't be sustained by the development by one person. So any type of mitigation that you might want to have, it's not going to be realistic to think that you're going to be able to get all of those things out of this proposal. So I think you need to keep that in mind, that you're just dealing with the zoning issue here, and I think right now it's too dense, it needs to be reduced in density. And I think the most important thing is to protect the integrity of that neighborhood and for the people that live there. Central Square is a gem. It's a beautiful part of Woburn, and I plan to stay there for the rest of my life, and I accept that there'll be changes, but I hope those changes are positive changes. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Do there anyone else who would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward. Sign the sheet, please. State your name and address. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carol Seitz. I'm Chair of the Woburn Historical Commission, and each of you got an email from me this weekend. Most of you responded, and I thank you very much. I am here to speak for the houses. The Woburn Historical Commission protects the history in the city, and there are 13 properties that line Main Street there, and yes, they have been ignored. It would appear to me, and I don't know this, that Mr. Tachi bought the properties and allowed them to disintegrate, knowing he planned to tear them down. They are part of what we would call a streetscape or a neighborhood. As such, they are somewhat protected by the Woburn Demolition Delay Ordinance. In that ordinance, it talks about streetscapes and neighborhoods and the fact that we can delay the demolition of those houses for a year. Each of those houses has been researched, and there are something called inventory forms for each property. Those forms are on file with the state, with the Massachusetts Historical Commission. You can go on a site and see the actual inventory forms. Those inventory forms deal with the architecture of each property and the people who lived there. The Historical Commission researches the people who lived in these properties. Their stories come to life. And as such, part of the Demolition Delay Ordinance is that each of those properties would have, Mr. Tachi would have to apply for a demol delay application for each property. We would determine, because each property is on the state inventory, each property would have to come before us for a hearing, and we could say, we could tell Mr. Tachi that he cannot take down the properties for a year. It's only a year, but it is some protection. So we speak for the houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Hi there. Hi, I'm Margaret Valentine, and I did email each of you. I texted. I thought it was easier than talking with me. I might talk longer. But I just changed.
Sorry, what is your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, 22 Richardson Street. So I agree with a lot of the things that were brought up here tonight and what I had written to you, but speaking for the houses, I grew up on Francis Street in a small colonial house, the smallest house on Francis Street in Central Square. Central Square was where I was raised, but my dad grew up in East Boston. He had the only single-family home on Bennington Street. We need to save our homes. That just made me bring this forward. I bought my house on Richardson Street. It's about the same footprint as my dad's. So as much as I'm opposed to this overlay, I really am. I think that we can adapt it, and I trust all of you because I've seen your work, and I think that if we adapt this, it just can't be passed as an overlay. And maybe you save the homes in the front and you build in the back, like John said. Don't hide it in John's yard, I'm so sorry, but we do need to save. That's just a great idea. I don't know. I am opposed to the overlay as it stands, and I want to thank you guys for.
Thanks, Margaret.
Thank you, Margaret.
My name's Jean Camaro. I live on Main Street in Central Square. I was born in Woburn and have lived here my entire life, more than half of it in Central Square. What I'm going to say are my own comments and opinions, and most of it is what everyone's already said, that it's too dense and the project is just not a good idea for the city. The neighborhood is too compact to handle proposed housing of this size for all the other previously stated reasons, traffic being a big deterrent. I cannot get out of my driveway 90% of the time unless someone stops to let me out. Adding upwards of 300-plus cars with the proposal as it stands is just a ridiculous and impractical idea. Adding turning lanes, in my opinion, at the intersections would just be a Band-Aid fix and cause more congestion. Eat-Nav and Clinton Street cannot and should not be made wider. I don't think they can be, but would still continue to take the brunt of traffic. The traffic apps on the phones work for drivers but are more than disruptive for local streets and families living there. Not sure of the timing of the recent traffic study, but every day on Main Street is either clogged traffic or a speedway. A lot of drivers have no patience for a four-way traffic light, and so there might be another traffic light right close to it if you did it at Clinton Street. And never mind mentioning the loud music and the cannabis odors coming from stopped vehicles. Fire and rescue have a difficult time getting through on Main Street, which is very dangerous. Half the drivers, more than half, don't even attempt to pull over, especially if two traffic lanes have formed heading south. The issue of school overcrowding is certainly a big condition also. With closings of schools, consolidating and tearing down schools, would more of them have to be built now if there was more families with children? Many students still walk to the middle school and even to the Wyman Hurd, and the traffic starts that early in the morning to make it a hazardous situation at the least. The aesthetics of the neighborhood is certainly a key issue also. This is a historic section of the city with lovely older homes. What becomes of the quality of life for these families or for any family in the city? It's like they've become invisible. There are still third, fourth, and even fifth-generation families living in the city. What's the consideration for them? The houses bordering Wyman Green that are in disrepair, of course, we've all said, I think are disgraceful and thoughtless. I get that the appeal for housing has to be to future generations, even though housing costs have become prohibitively expensive, and that the bottom line is always about profit. But at this point in time, this city has become, I believe, overrun by big businesses, hotels, lodge housing developments on lost farmland, and now apartment complexes. Woburn is no longer a suburb, I don't think. It's become like an inner city of Boston. I would strongly urge the council to not approve the overlay district or any permits related to this proposal. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much.
How are you tonight, Catherine?
Very well, thank you. I made some notes as opposed to winging it. For the record, my name is Catherine Shaughnessy. I live at 31 Scott Street. I'm in Ward 3 Hammond Square section of the city, which is a hop, skip, and a jump to where this proposed project is. And whatever happens there will dramatically affect my neighborhood as well as Central Square. But make no mistake about it, what happens on Main Street, no matter where you live in Woburn, whether you live in north, south, east, or west, Kel Town, the Highlands, the Island, everybody who goes on Main Street in Woburn will be affected by this project. What happens when apartments outnumber homes in a community? Density. As apartments outnumber homes, the population density of the area increases, which can lead to crowded streets, schools, and public spaces. We all know how hard it is to get around Woburn now, and no traffic study can convince me otherwise that we don't have a huge traffic problem in the city. Higher demand for services like trash collection, transportation, utilities, this will lead to a strain on infrastructure, public safety, police, and fire services. When there's more apartments in a city than homes, it shifts the community and its lifestyle. Apartment leaving tends to attract more of a transient population, as people move in and out more frequently than in a single or double-family homes. This can make communities less stable with fewer long-term residents and potentially less involvement with local ties. When you have more apartments than homes, it has impact on families, especially the high-density areas. They may not be conducive to raising families due to limited space and fewer yards. In summary, when apartments outnumber homes in a city or town, it can lead to a shift toward more urbanized, dense living environments with potential challenges related to overcrowding, transportation, and affordability. Now, do we have more apartments in Woburn than homes? Well, if we don't, I think we're getting very, very close to it. So according to the U.S. Census in 2020, total households were 16,121. An average household has three people. Family households in Woburn, 10,458. Non-family households, 5,063. Now, this is five years old, the census. And since that census, we've had the development at the Fitzgerald Tile, that's all apartments. We've had the Woburn Heights. We've had the Avalon. We've had the Vale. Not to mention the extended-stay hotels where folks are living. We also have boarding houses, illegal apartments, halfway houses, many of which we don't, in many of our neighborhoods. And speaking to my neighborhood, it's very difficult to get out of my neighborhood in Hammond Square onto Main Street because of the traffic. There's no way I can take a left and go north coming out of Chestnut Street. It's a little easier at Scott Street, but oftentimes it takes three light changes before I can get out, and the same with Plimpton. And that's how difficult it is to get out of my neighborhood. Now, the other way is Win Street, and that's no picnic either. So I want to say kudos to Alderman Demambro and Alderman Mesa Bruin. I read an article, the City Council removed the cluster developments from the zoning code in Woburn. And I want to thank them for fighting for the neighborhoods of the city. They put their interests, the people's interests, above private equity of developers and hedge fund groups. And this is a battle in Woburn between Main Street and Wall Street, from my view. But if I could read a little from the article in the Middle Sex East, June of 2024, which is just a year ago. "Highlighting an alarming trend where hedge funds, private equity groups are looking to cash in on the state's record-high housing prices by scooping up real estate in Woburn and beyond. Both city councillors began sounding the alarm last winter after hearing at least two other real estate entities have been paying close attention to debate and proposed zoning amendments." They chose, "East Woburn and North Woburn neighbors have been transformed dramatically over the past decade. In the midst of construction boom, largely centered on apartment complexes." "I've seen a trend in our neighborhoods where big corporations are purchasing single-family homes," and I don't mean LLCs, I mean big corporations where you can't even find who's running them, Mesa Bruin won during a planning board meeting. And that's true. That's what's happening in the city. And cluster developments in overlay districts, exactly the same? No, they're not. I could argue that, in my opinion, an overlay district is worse. I don't like overlay districts. They're too fuzzy. They're too vague. In the 1986 zoning code, there weren't any overlay districts. You knew what they were. You knew what an R1 district was. You knew what an R2 district was. You knew what a business district was. You knew what an industrial district was. But an overlay district, who knows? Who knows? It's like anything can go. And case in point is, go look over at the Vale. I saw some beautiful, beautiful renderings and drawings of what was going to go over there. But if you go over there, it looks like Fallujah. Nothing, it's horrible over there. So there's no guarantee that this project is going to improve things in Central Square. To me, it's going to ruin Central Square, and it's going to ruin Hammond Square. And if that's gone, it's gone forever. So we ask the council to deny this overlay district, and for all the reasons you heard by your residents. Finally, I'd like to address what I've heard some folks say, that we have to be careful what we wish for, that if we don't go along with this developer and this project, they could go to the state and things could be much, much worse for us. Well, I feel like that is fear-mongering, and I do not think we should capitulate to such tactics. If the council choose to represent their constituents, document their reasons for denying this overlay district in a succinct way, I have every confidence that we will prevail. Please vote no. Woburn doesn't need any more apartments or hotels. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine. Thank you.
Hello, Eric Scarborough, 53 Mishawam Road. I just want to thank all the councilors for supporting their constituents and not supporting this overlay change. Thank you for listening to us. Thank you for reading those emails. Thank you for responding to the ones that you could. I heard talk about rejuvenating Central Square, and I live right near there, and I don't disagree, although I feel like... And I don't disagree, although I feel like some of that rejuvenation is needed because of the developer who wants to build this massive development. But I would give you an idea of how you could rejuvenate Central Square. You could rejuvenate it by saving the Wyman Castle. That's how you could rejuvenate Central Square. Save the castle, protect our history, convert it into a community center, and do not sell it to a developer. It's that simple. And I ask, if you truly want to rejuvenate Central Square, that's how you do it. Save the Wyman Castle. Thank you.
Just while you're signing, and I will state, someone wants to say a brief statement about the Wyman Castle. That's fine, but it is not part of the overlay here tonight. So just bear that in mind. I want to make sure everybody has a chance to talk about the overlay and not get distracted with something that's not part of it or not on the agenda tonight. So thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members. My name is Richard Lennon. I'm a co-owner of property at 22 Hart Street. And I'd like to speak about the flooding issue. First off, I realize Mr. Toachi has the right to develop his property, and I realize he has nothing to do with the current flooding issue over on Hart Street. But what my concerns are, when we're building in such close proximity to the Middlesex Canal, it's going to make things much worse. And I don't know how many other people I hear from Hart Street, but I know my house and my sister's house, it's probably worth $200,000 less than the market value because of the condition of the property and the flooding. And I understand that, you know, I'm sure Mr. Toachi's hired a geotechnical engineer. I'm sure he's hired a civil engineer, and I'm sure they have a nice stormwater plant.
Sir, just, just speak to us so the TV gets you.
But at the end, at the end of the day, there's no guarantees. You know, what guarantees do the people on Hart Street have that we're not going to end up with more water? And I guess, you know, he has the right to develop, okay? But why can't you develop within the constraints that exist now? Okay? There's a set of rules. And I think what you have to do, to Councilor Marissa Bruin's comment earlier, I think you have to weigh maximum profit against quality of life for how many hundreds of other people are affected by this. Now, I'm not saying don't build anything there. Something's going to get built there sooner or later. But I just think there's a lot of things that probably need to be discussed before you do. And for me, it's the flooding on Hart Street. And again, he's not responsible for it, but you know, what guarantees do we have that it's not going to become worse? Because for me, I have skin in the game. You know what I mean? For me, it's, you know, it's financial, amongst other things, you know? We don't even use the property now. We don't even use the yacht. We can't. But thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Lennon.
Does everyone remember to sign in, please, as well?
Carol Nagel, 723 Main Street. Thank you for taking your time. I'd like to talk about the overlay part of it. I am concerned with that because I went to many meetings back in 2022 when a lot of the people in this council voted in the life science business overlay district at the Middlesex Canal Showcase Cinemas. And if you have been down there recently, it's not very nice. And we were threatened with, it could be a 40B. We were told, "You better like what's coming in." We were told, "Don't be afraid of..." Well, since then, it's been sold. The special permit was renewed last year, and then it got sold a month later. So it's now owned by Home Depot. But the city was sued by the original National Amusements because they wanted to subdivide it, and they got denied by the council. We got sued and we settled. Well, in the settlement, part of the settlement was that the drainage, the water, the catch basins, everything that was supposed to happen, any kind of mediation when it came to water, did not have to start until the lot that was subdivided was sold and still not until the permits were issued by the building department. So now, we're looking at another two years because the special permit was extended out two years. So you're looking at November 2026, I believe it is, that nothing will happen there. So in the meantime, if you drive down there and see what an eyesore it is, there's fences that have fallen down, there's trees that have fallen down and taken out the fences. No one has any intention. There's flooding all along the road. There's, there's potholes bigger than... I just drove down it last night. Potholes bigger than your car. And in the back there, I can't speak for the neighbors, but if I was a neighbor down there, I can't say that I'd be really happy. So now you say to yourself, you have these issues. If there's any kind of flooding there, does the special permit take care of it? Or does the overlay take care of it? Because now we have the overlay over the special permit. Both, and the petitioner back in 94, from 94 on, never followed the 33 conditions of the special permit. Never had a final special permit. Was allowed to beg out of that, got his final special permit, and then turned around and sued the city anyway because they got denied on the subdivision. So, long story short, I don't know which takes precedent. So now we have a pretty serious water issue from Star and Sharp to the Boys and Girls Club. And everybody keeps saying, "It's not my problem." This petitioner, at the planning board meeting last Tuesday, said, "The water issues on Hart Street are not my problem. They're the city's problem." I get that. But these people should not have to be living like that. The people that are surrounding the Showcase Cinemas should not have to be living like that. So you put an overlay district, another overlay district, in a very small area. One's a little to my north, one's a little to my south. And you're talking traffic, traffic, traffic. Let's talk water because it's horrible what's going on here. And you take and you drop that in the middle of our beautiful neighborhood, our beautiful Central Square, where if you drive down Wyman Street or Lowell Street, you have these beautiful subdivisions with these beautiful homes that people have taken the time to go and follow the rules and build the house that belongs there. It's just a shame that we are so afraid of this 40B that we allow these people to come in and put these developments in that just don't belong. And thank you very much for all of your time.
Thanks, Carol.
Who else would like to speak in this matter? We're going to give a little time in case the people in the committee room would like to come over and speak as well. So as we wait, anyone else? Yes, sir. Just state your name and address, please, sir.
Hi, my name is Nick Holt House. I live at 22 Watson Lane. So just about a block over from Central Square. You guys can probably tell from my accent. I'm not born and raised in Woburn. But it's my home, and I live here, and my kids are born and raised at Woburn. And I hope they live here for a long time. Agree with what some of the other people said about the density and the transition to density. I think this would be a great project for Somerville or Cambridge. I don't think it's a great project for Woburn. We need to think about the impacts on our schools. We know the problems that we have with the schools. We know about the crowding and the capacity issues we have. And we don't really have a good way to get through that in the near term. This would exacerbate that heavily. In terms of traffic, you can't tell me that adding more cars than are all, are parked on the entirety of Wyman Street isn't going to have any impact. But anybody who drives down that street, and councillor, maybe you've seen it too, it's, it's kind of dangerous. People go fast, and there's a school zone, and it's incredibly dangerous. We're going to exacerbate that problem. Central Square cannot, cannot handle that volume of cars. It probably couldn't handle 15 more cars. Some other things, too. I, you know, I think coming in here with kind of this Faustian bargain of, "Go along with whatever we say, or you're just going to get something worse." You know, to be honest, I think you guys can get out of town with that type of rhetoric. And honestly, the area, the area needs to be redeveloped because it's blighted. But if Mr. Toachi has had those houses for a decade, I mean, put a coat of paint on him. You could do that tomorrow. Show some goodwill to the community. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time, council.
Thank you.
Nick Galvin, how are you?
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
Nice to be back.
How are you?
So I just wanted to say a couple of words. I was home watching this, and there's a lot of good debate going on. And when I look at zoning, when I start with a petition like this, you first look at what's allowed, right? You look at the site and what's allowed. And when you look at the Gustavino property in the petition you have in front of you, they're talking about six acres. Four of the acres are on the Gustavino site. And he's assembled about 11 other lots contingent, around the area to make up the six acres. So the current zoning for the four acres is in what's called the R3 zone. And when you look at the R3 zone, you can build, you know, you can build the apartments here. You need 12,000 square feet for one unit. And for every additional unit, you need 5,000 square feet. So when you do the math, without even taking into consideration the property that's there, you're looking at about 30 units. 30 units that can be built. So I'm kind of scratching my head, saying, "You got to propose for 200 units, and the council's going to be bargaining against itself." The other six parcels that they're putting in the overlay zone, the other 11, Mr. Toachi owns half of them. Half of them. And one of them is the fire station. And I want to ask through the chair, because I haven't seen it recorded, the registered deeds, have we conveyed that property?
I believe we have, yes.
Can we ask the petition if he's paid for it yet?
We can ask that question.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Has he paid the city the money for that property yet?
Mr. Toachi?
Hasn't fully closed.
Well, let me ask you something. The auction took place December 3rd. The terms of the auction, which was well-attended, there were a number of bidders there, were that you had to pay within 30 days. Okay? So there are other bidders who dropped out because the prices got so high. Mr. Toachi was required to pay within 30 days. We're three months out. If I'm one of those other bidders, I'm going to the inspector general, saying, "What's going on here?" Because they had a right to that property as well. Okay? So with that being said, let's get back to what's in front of you. What's in front of you is a petition. And you don't have to give reasons for this zoning change. This is the only time you can flat-out say, "No, we do not like it." Once you approve it, then it becomes subject to the special permit, and you need to give reasons. You have to have, you can't be arbitrary and capricious. You need to give reasons. So what I'm telling you, you got a beautiful Wyman Common. I love the place. I don't think it's rundown. I think it's beautiful. You've got a handful of houses that, again, Mr. Toachi owns half of them. I could tell you in a second, there's a number of developers who would love to take those and turn them into beautiful two families. Wouldn't you? I would. So let them, let them the bullshit right now. Say no, no, no. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Campaign season just kicked off.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? I don't think he signed in the way out, by the way.
We all know him. We all know who he is, Mayor Galvin. Listen, all nine of yous up here know...
Mr. Booker, could you please just... Thank you.
For the record, my name is William Booker. I live at 3 Forest Park Circle, Woburn. I've been a resident for 63 years. All right? I represented Ward Four for six years. All nine of yous know what's right here. There's no, there's no bargaining here. Fear-mongering does not work, Alderman Demambro. It doesn't work. Okay? You had, you had the greatest line I've ever heard a number of weeks ago. "I see a one-bedroom and I see two cars." It works. But don't flip. Don't flip. Okay, this project, it brings massive profits to the developer. It brings increased lottery sales to Jacks. That's all it does. It puts pressure on our schools. We have closed three schools in 13 years. Incredible. All right? Say no. And, Mr. President, there's 300 people here tonight. They want to hear from you tonight, not down the road. Give up the Galvadaleen and speak, please. I am opposed.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
I can't let my name be beaten to it. Pat Chisholm, 6 Forest Park Circle. My concern with this is, number one, it's ridiculously too big. You're going to kill Central Square, which in fact kills Woburn. I mean, we are inundated with traffic in there. And the Hurl Wyman, which you'll be hearing later tonight, it's overcrowded now. And I know some people think that if you have apartments, one- or two-bedroom apartments, they don't create babies. They do. They do. You know, there's a lot of people that can't afford to buy homes in Woburn. So they're buying, they're going into these studio apartments, and they still don't have babies. We have a bus that comes out of Woburn Village for our schools. So they are, so we need to cut this way back. Not only we're going to need $5 million, we're going to need like about $150 million to build another school. So just think about the size of this. And don't worry that it's a two-bedroom. We're not going to have kids. We are. So just give a long, hard thought that we need to shut this down big time. If you want to build townhouses, not eight and 16 or 24 of them, make it look nice and make Central Square pretty again on that side of the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Who else would like to speak in this matter? How are you tonight?
Good, thank you. Elizabeth Kavicki, 18 Clinton Street. Thank you all the councillors for speaking and questioning this massive development. And I appreciate all the comments that have been made by the public and the councillors. I appreciate the spoke, speaking of the historical person about the homes and somebody else who said that those homes, as is, could be renovated in a nice way. I wonder also who's living in those homes now. And if the homes are taken away, what happens to them? Would they even be able to afford to live in Woburn anymore or there? Main Street is already too narrow and congested. Clinton Street, which I live on, cannot accommodate the traffic, the excessive traffic at multiple times a day that's backed up. The high speeds, which people spoke about on Main Street, are happening on Clinton Street. There's not the passing distance for a car to pass a pedestrian or a bike on Clinton Street or Main Street. And where they've put the two lanes, the turn lane and the straightaway lane on Main Street in front of the Toachi property, there is no space for a bike. There's hardly even space for cars. If you put a truck in there and, and they're talking about turning Clinton Street into a thruway, into this development, that's highly concerning for the residents. Public transportation is almost non-existent in Woburn, and this situation is not going to be helped. I'm also concerned for lighting, the excess lighting that would be added to the night sky and nature, the loss of whatever trees and green space in this area, which has a depression, as everyone has noted, that collects water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this matter? How are you, sir?
Good. My name is John Lally. I own property at 29 Hart Street, which also abuts the Middlesex Canal. I spoke with Mr. Toachi. He's a very nice guy. He lives in Lexington, I believe. He really doesn't have a, he portrayed himself, He really doesn't have a, he portrayed himself, he portrayed himself at a neighborhood meeting as growing up in Woburn. He didn't move to Woburn. He bought property, and now he wants to build it. I see out here in the audience, there's a lot of people from Hart Street, who it's going to affect mostly. They're going to be looking at this building, and it's just heartbreaking to see that they want to put big buildings in there where it's predominantly residential area, which I think, as Darlene said, how about some single-family houses? I think that would be more appropriate than a high-rise building. He's already into it for millions of dollars with all the property he bought, so that's not feasible for him. But I'm going to leave it up to you to do the right thing. And, you know, it's too big of a project. People are going to be affected on Hart Street. Traffic, there's nothing, you can't get away from the traffic. You all know that. We all live in the city. It's there. Some of the properties that he bought on Main Street were already dilapidated before he bought them in his defense. I've been in a couple of them, and it wasn't him. But, you know, he's buying them. He's already into it, like I said, for a couple of millions of dollars. And I just don't think the project is a fit for that area, especially with the Boys Club next door. That just means more predatory people to the kids that are going over there. I just hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Step right up.
My name is Lee Black, and I've been in Woburn my whole life. I live at 7 Clinton Street, and we've lived there, my wife and I, and our kids, well, the kids are grown and gone now, but we've been there for 47 years. Probably a stone's throw to the fire station. And I just think if that entrance goes into the property, now you've got another four-way stop with traffic lights. You've got people coming in all directions. They can turn left, right, or go straight. I just think the traffic is brutal there. It's brutal there now. In the evening, it's tough for us to back out of our driveway. Even, you've got to wait for, hopefully someone will let you out. Not counting Friday. I know Friday was a real mess. But that's, that's my big issue, along with, I have no problem with addressing those houses on Main Street. Like I said, I've been here for 47 years at that location. And we, my wife and I, we walk around that whole neighborhood, and just, we know what's going on. We see. It was a neighbor of mine that actually invited me to come tonight. I really wasn't even too involved with what was going on with that overlay. I've been playing nursemaid to my wife. She had a knee replacement. So, anyway, that's my big, my big issue, though. All the traffic that's going to be, it's caused there. It's crazy that people come off 128 or 95, whatever you want to call it. They come over Wyman Street, then they come up Clinton, and Clinton Street's a mess. You know, you've got the other four-way up the end of the street, which sometimes trying to get across that is, you know, that can be a little dangerous, too. So, that's, that's my complaints.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Samantha, would you do me a favor and just check the committee room, let them know that we may be winding down here? I want to make sure they're aware of, thank you. How are you, sir?
Hello. I am Alva Couch at 18 Clinton Street. We abut the Wyman School property. We also have a terrible time getting out of our driveway, just like everyone else on Clinton Street. But I think that I speak for everyone here for saying that we are truly nervous about giving blanket permission on this thing. And we would love it. We don't want you, we don't want to ask you this, but we would like you to do more work. We would like you to actually see detailed plans for this. And I apologize for asking you for that. But we are all very nervous about it. I've lived here 44 years. We expect to live here the rest of our lives. Our house turns 100 next year. And the, and the point of is, the point of my talk is very simple. We're too nervous for the blanket permission that a zoning overlay would give.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, how are you doing tonight?
Hey, guys. I'm Rachel Cooberry. I live at 6 Blake Street, and my house is also turning 100 very soon. So, I think there are many positives to this project. The one that hasn't been spoken about that I feel strongly about is pedestrian safety. I really love the idea of closing off all those driveways on Lowell Street, because my kids walk that property to get to the Hurl Wyman. There are a lot of negatives that people spoke about tonight, including density and parking, which are my concerns. I am having a hard time considering this project in isolation, and I know that's what we're trying to do here right now with the overlay. But I really want to hear more about how this fits into the big picture of Woburn. I know that we have a master plan. It looks like our master plan was developed 10 years ago and expires this year. I'm not saying that it expires and that's impactful. But the lot has changed in my neighborhood in Ward 4, when we're talking about this property, when we're talking about the old Wyman, when we're talking about Home Depot. It's really hard for me to weigh in, in isolation on those projects. So, I, I don't know what the answer is here, and I look forward to hearing more about it. And I also want to hear more about the connection of the, the big projects that are going on in the area. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Can we take a motion for a 10-minute recess?
I'll make a motion. We take a 10-minute recess?
There is a motion-
Second.
-in a second to take a 10-minute recess, just so everyone can regroup.
Just 10 minutes.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
How you doing? You all right sitting down there, Tom?
Yeah.
Each please.
Can you go out and call Scotty?
Was that?
Do you go call Scotty? I texted him.
Texted him?
Yeah.
Before or after he did?
After he left. I said, "Good to see you're fired back in your belly big guy."
I'd like to see that.
There you are.
Yes, sir. Your name and address?
J.P. Cachalia, 386 Salem Street.
Thank you, sir.
I guess my question would be, is why do, or why is the process not to go to the planning and then do the planning contingent on the zoning? So you pass the planning, you go through the entire site plan review process, you know exactly what you're getting, and then you write your zoning to meet that site plan exactly. And when you do the zoning bylaw, you can write through in there even down to building materials, streetlight type, you know, full cutoffs where the buildings are on the site so you meet the exact density. And then if another person, if Mr. Tochi were to sell the property, the current zoning would actually have to come, would hold. And if anybody ever wanted to make amends to that, you would have to come back to go both through the planning process as well as through the zoning process and amend the site plan, both the site plan and the zoning for the site.
Thank you, sir.
That's a good point.
So, that would be my one comment.
Thank you.
Thanks, JP.
Thank you.
Thank you, JP.
How are you tonight?
My name is Susan Tiffo, 33 Beach Street in Woburn. I ask each of you to take a moment and think about the lasting impact of this development. This proposal will permanently alter the character of our city. Central Square is more than just a location on a map. It is the heart of our community, a place woven in history, memories, and shared sense of identity. This is more than a policy. It's about preserving the soul of Woburn for generations to come. Do the right thing, stand with the people, and say no. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan.
Anyone else who would like to speak in this matter? How are you tonight?
Good. I'm Sasha Hernandez, 13 Bennett Street. So since I'm not from the neighborhood, I'm going to just speak to what I think is good for the city. I do believe more housing is good for the city. I also believe in the democratic process, and I think there's been a lot of feedback tonight, and I do hope the petitioners take that feedback into account because that's important. But I do hope that this project doesn't die because fundamentally we do have an affordability issue in Woburn, and I do think more housing units will help that affordability issue. So I hope this moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sasha.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this matter? How you doing tonight?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you, Chris.
Hello. Christopher Sylvia, 13 Bennett Street. And I do want to ask the councilors and the residents to have an open mind about this project. I think a lot of people here have been homeowners for a very long time and haven't faced the brutal realities of the local housing market recently. Well, I did five years ago, and it was, it was a lot, and the prices have only gone up since then. So people, you know, people I know are paying huge, huge amounts for houses and huge amounts for apartments. And so I just think that, you know, we all learned about supply and demand and, you know, in school, and this is supply. This is what it looks like. And, you know, it's easy to say no to something, but, you know, when someone comes forward with a firm proposal, you know, I think that the city should consider it and try to, try to make something out of it. So, you know, more people are trying to live here in eastern Massachusetts, more people are trying to grow here, and, you know, when people age in place, that means that their house have an empty nest. And what that means is we can't just keep the, you know, the housing supply constant across the city. We have to grow a little bit, even just to meet the demand of people moving out of their houses and, you know, growing up, you know. We don't necessarily want all of our kids to stay living with us for their entire lives. So, you know, I do think that there's benefits to density, whether these units are get built or not. I think that the best way to prevent the destruction of wild land, the destruction of animal habitat, destruction of open space and farms and all those things that we love is to choose an area and build intensively in that location. That is what density is. And what that also allows for is for creating a real neighborhood and adding businesses, adding parks, adding all those sorts of urban amenities that make you want to live somewhere. Density achieves that. And, you know, from the perspective of the city, then you were able to hook it up once to a lot of power, hook it up once to a lot of sewer. And finally, what I think is most important to the people in this room, that you get a big assessed value on that property, and then you tax them. And that tax rate goes into our funds and means lower taxes for all of us. The neighboring communities are not having a good time with their fiscal position. Stonem is running out of money, and they need to pass an override. Otherwise, they're going to have to cut police, cut fire, and lay off teachers. We aren't there because of the prudent management of this council and of this city. But if we just say no to everything, and we don't make a good faith effort to engage with people, I think we could end up there. So, a couple of other comments. You know, I definitely think that what councillor Mercer-Bruin said about diversity of types in the site is a good, good thing. You know, one thing I particularly want to see would be retail. You know, that would be coffee shops and that sort of thing that I think really could benefit the neighborhood, have something more than just the, you know, just the convenience store right there. I think that could be helpful and might get some, gives people something in return for putting up with the development. One other commenter mentioned 10-foot setbacks, setbacks as opposed to 20-foot. I support that. Another commenter mentioned saving the homes in the front and building in the back. I think that's a good idea as well. I think the apartments are fine, you know, for what they are, but the, I don't think the townhouses look better than what's currently there, even in the dilapidated state, I have to say. So, you know, I think that I've spent a lot of money on renovating our house, and I think it's reasonable to expect that sort of thing. Finally, at the beginning of last year, we saw some plans for the Middle Sex Canal Bike Path, and there hasn't been any progress on that as far as I know. So I would love to see something of that sort get built. And it's given that, you know, we might be giving, the city of Woburn might be doing something for Mr. Tachi. I think Mr. Tachi could do something for Woburn and pay for some of the construction of that bike path according to the original plans that were laid out in the meeting in January of 2023. But in general, I just want to ask the council that we can get something out of this and not make it a no, but make it some, some negotiation. So that's what I'd ask the council. So try to, try to get something out of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris.
Is there anyone else I would like to speak in this matter? How are you tonight?
Good, thank you. Marie-Lee, 6 Marion Ave. The previous speaker was concerned about the availability of apartments and density.
Just a little closer to microphone, Marie. Thank you.
Previous speaker was concerned about density and the availability of apartments. I think we just read there are about 700 planned by the state mostly, up by Anderson and the New Bridge. I think 700 in a concentrated area will create some density. I think also people reference possible mandates by the governor, by various agencies in the state. That we can't control. However, we can control what happens to an overlay or no overlay. And I think what we should do is not have an overlay because it's spot zoning. It's spot zoning. We have the whole city, we need to look at the plan for the whole city. But I know Mr. Tachi probably wants to get going on this project. I think what's allowed currently without an overlay, he'll make money. He'll make money. He can put one-family, two-family houses, R3, I don't really know for sure what that is. But I just think we should consider the fact that we have some control. Let's have the best possible outcome. And Mr. Tachi and Mr. Carbone will certainly still be successful businessmen without having an overlay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this matter? And I do believe we've checked with the committee room. Everyone's good in there? And seeing nobody else?
Make a motion that the public hearing be continued to the regular meeting of the City Council on April 15.
Second.
Second and on the motion?
Yes.
I'd like to send a communication to the city auditor's office and the collector's office to get a status on why the payment has not been made for the fire station. To my knowledge, it was not conditioned upon ability to build anything.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes on the original motion, a motion to move this to, what was?
April 15.
April 15.
Is a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
Next item on the agenda we have under committee reports is from the Committee on Finance, the order that $740,283.75 be transferred from unreserved fund balance account to fire Sally's contract settlement. Committee report was received, ought to pass.
Make a motion the committee report be adopted.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
President, Dylan, I'm just going to wait a second.
Yes, sure.
Next item on the agenda from the Committee on Finance, the order that a total of $62,700 be transferred from Goddard School Crossing account, from Woodbridge Station account, and from 165 Cambridge Road account. A committee report was received, ought to pass.
Make a motion the committee report be adopted.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
On the order authorizing the matter entered into a lease with Cummings Properties for premises at 4 F Henshaw Street for a temporary relocation of Fire Station Number 4, a committee report received back for action.
Make a motion the order be adopted.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
From the Committee on Personnel, on the appointment of Anthony Langone Jr. to the Woburn Redevelopment Authority, a committee report was received, ought to pass.
Make a motion the committee report be adopted.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
On the appointment of Douglas Olander to the Woburn Redevelopment Authority, a committee report was received, ought to pass.
Make a motion the committee report be adopted.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
From Public Safety and License, on the petition by Woburn Host Lions Club for a special event permit for a charity dog walk at Hon Pon and Area Streets on April 5, 2025, with request for waiver of umbrella liability.
Make a motion the committee report be adopted.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
On the petition for renewal of common carrier license for transaction corporate shuttles 5 Wheeling Avenue, a committee report was received, ought to pass.
Make a motion the committee report be adopted.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
On a citizens' participation petition for citizens' participation by Jack and Karen Foley, 86 Beach Street, to eject a sidewalk extension of the intersection.
Make a motion that the matter be referred to the Committee on Liaison.
Second and on the motion?
Yes.
Just want to let everyone know I did speak with Karen Foley. Her and I have been in touch the last couple of weeks, and she did let me know she wouldn't be coming this evening. I also let, I also let her know that councillor DeMers and I will be holding a, just as I'm saying this, so people at home in that area know that we're going to be holding a neighborhood meeting to talk about that intersection and those pedestrian crossing lights probably in mid-April. You'll see something on Facebook from our, from our social media soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
On appointments and elections. The appointment, the reappointment of Mark Arkavicki to the Woburn Board of Appeals.
Make a motion the matter be referred to the Committee on Personnel.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
There's also an appointment of Francesco Alonzo Jr. to the Woburn Commission on Disability.
Make a motion the matter be referred to the Committee on Personnel.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
Next item on the agenda is we have a resolve to allow the Woburn School Committee to discuss space capacity issues as well as potential acquisition of modular classrooms at the March 18, 2025 City Council meeting.
Make a motion to suspend the rules to allow school committee chair and her designees to speak.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
There is a PowerPoint if you just give this a couple minutes.
You going to start out with the PowerPoint, Ellen?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to start with the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to get out of the way, that's why I asked.
Oh, okay.
The reflection off my head isn't good.
You need a hand?
Need help?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Careful.
Chuck, just go over. Allenson. Man, I appreciate it. You have another card?
Okay, it sounds like we are ready to lift off. I'll wait till Clark Higgins is seated. We have a handout of the PowerPoint that I'm about to present to you. Thank you.
Thanks. She got three chips. I don't think so.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you. No, I got, I got one. You just skipped him, for good reason.
I usually don't have that much of an agenda. We'll make a motion that we receive the PowerPoint presentation and make a part of the permanent record.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. As you know, I'm Ellen Crowley, Chair of the Woburn School Committee. I want to thank President Dylan and the rest of the council members for hearing us tonight. The goals of this presentation is to provide the council with the latest updated information on the multifaceted issue of what it is to have space capacity issues in the Woburn public schools. We understand that this is an issue that crosses jurisdictional lines, as you are the body that is in charge of growth and development and asset procurement while we are responsible for the school system. Per our charter, the school committee is the original judges of the need for alteration and accommodation of Woburn public school buildings, and as such, we have a responsibility to come before you and report when there are condition issues within our school system. We hope to seek collaboration on a short-term plan while we pursue construction of a new school building. And if anything, we walk out of here with a shared vision and a shared understanding of what's happening in the space capacity issues in the school system, then we've already advanced the issue. How did we get here and what's the process that we went through? Very briefly, we have been studying space capacity issues for many, many years. Noteworthy dates are the following. In 2019, the school committee commissioned a study from NESDEC to study birth rates and growth in the public school system. In 2002, as you know, we funded the feasibility study, which was intended to study both the conditions of the buildings but also the growth changes within the district and how we can best respond to them. As you know, we received a, the two kind of pressing points within the feasibility study in terms of growth and development was, of course, the early childhood program and the growing rise program. In 2024, we began our first attempt at redistricting to alleviate the space issues within the public school system. And what we learned from that elongated process is that we desperately needed an ECP task force to study the early childhood programming on a more communal and bring in stakeholders to really hear from stakeholders what the early childhood program needs. In 2024, in December, we heard from the early childhood task force that they are unequivocally recommending the addition of modulars to the Woburn public schools in order to support the early childhood program and its growth. In February of 2025, we adopted the recommendations of the ECP, and we unconditionally found that they are educationally necessary at this point to deal with the learning conditions within the Woburn public schools. And that's why we're here. It's important to back up and really talk about what the early childhood program is. I just need a sip of water. To really back up and remind the public what the importance of the pre-K program in Woburn is. It is not, for instance, childcare, and is certainly not something that parents drop their children off to be minded by teachers in the Woburn public schools. Preschool is required by law. For some learners within our school system, learning- on a more communal and bring in stakeholders to really hear from stakeholders what the early childhood program needs. In 2024, in December, we heard from the early childhood task force that they are unequivocally recommending the addition of modulars to the Woburn public schools in order to support the early childhood program and its growth. In February of 2025, we adopted the recommendations of the ECP. And we unconditionally found that they are educationally necessary at this point to deal with the learning conditions within the Woburn public schools. And that's why we're here. It's important to back up and really talk about what the early childhood program is. I just need a sip of water. To really back up and remind the public what the importance of the pre-K program in Woburn is. It is not, for instance, childcare. It is certainly not something that parents drop their children off to be minded by teachers in the Woburn public schools. Preschool is required by law. For some learners within our school system, learning starts at the age of three. In fact, identification for special education services begins at 2.9. The early childhood program is the foundation for certain learners within our district. It is crucially important for their learning. In addition, it is made up of skilled, talented educators that have master's degrees. We also have a team of specialists such as speech and language pathologists, BCBA's, occupational therapy and special educators, and of course, our highly skilled paraprofessionals. The early childhood program provides a spectrum of services. It provides both substantially separate programming and integrated programming with typical peers. So it's not just a one program. It is a multifaceted, complex program that can provide a least restrictive environment for learners in the need for a smaller classroom with intensive needs, if possible. Why should we worry about the pre-K and not having enough space for it? It is absolutely required to provide, we are absolutely required to provide an early childhood program. We are currently under corrective action by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education because we do not have enough typical peers within our integrated program. A part of the reason for that is that we are running a half-day program for some of our learners. Maureen Ryan made the following quote on this slide that we have received correspondence regarding our non-compliance. I won't read it because it's available to you to read. The other important piece of when we speak about the redistricting process and the need for space in the Woburn public schools is the need for bubble rooms. Woburn has class size limits. We cannot go above a certain amount of students in each classroom. When the limit is reached in one particular classroom, it is absolutely essential that each building have multiple bubble rooms. So when there, when the students, the class sizes grow within a particular classroom, we have overflow classrooms. This is how we control the class sizes per the collective bargaining agreement. This is how we provide the optimum education environment. And so if there is vacant rooms within a building, it's not a misuse of space or of resources. It's essential to education programming. I add that because not everyone understands the concept of bubble rooms or, because I heard President Dillon ask that the other day, so that's why I put it in the slide. I'm going to go through school by school by school so we all understand what the space capacity issues are in each building. I will start at the top, the Alta Vesta. The entire school building is at capacity. The Alta Vesta, unlike the Malcolm White, the Hurd Wyman a couple of years ago, and other schools, the Alta Vesta doesn't, cannot tolerate space issues because it was built with a vision of 1950's education. Alta Vesta will slowly and quickly run out of space. It is housing the SOAR program, which takes up four of its classrooms, at the Alta Vesta, and is rapidly growing in high-need students. Three resource educators are forced to share one room during instruction and conducting instruction at the same time. Carly McAllister would remind you, she's the parent rep on our redistricting committee, that the Alta Vesta is in very poor condition. The roof leaks, it smells like mold, and it's not a good learning environment. It doesn't have an elevator, so we're also limited in what programs we can place there. The Linskit Elementary School is currently sharing a space in the library. It is having space issues. It had to put partitions up in the library. Art, music, and health are using the same classroom. The roof is leaking in the fourth and fifth grade classrooms. And the building will be at capacity for the year of 2025 and 2026. Again, it does not have bubble rooms, so we're already seeing a problem there. It is currently housing our assessment center, which, I won't go into what it is right now, but it's a special education program. It has very limited parking, and it also is in poor condition. Thank you, Brian Provinture, for representing the Linskit on our parent committee. Moving on to the Reeves. The Reeves in itself is a dynamic situation. It is the fastest-growing population of students that has the ECP program. It is currently being used for non-intended purposes. It was built in 2000 in order to serve the West Side children, but it is slowly getting taken over by the early childhood program. Nine classrooms are currently being used for pre-K. We will see an increase in that for about two classrooms next year. Only 18 classrooms are being used for K through 5, and it also has the PALS substantially separate program. Next year, we will add one to two classrooms for the early childhood program. We will need to take away a specialist room or use a room that does not have windows. Health shares a space with the library, and because of the complexity of the Reeves, sharing both the ECP and general ed, we have serious building management issues related to the traffic in the morning. The Goodyear and the Hurd Wyman have similar but very dynamic issues. The Goodyear does not have a bubble room. And the Goodyear CLAP is exceeding the capacity. The Goodyear no longer has rooms available for private counseling for children that are associated with the GAIN program. Three special education teachers share one room during instruction. That is three different sets of children, all learning in one room at the same time with three different teachers. The three multilingual teachers share one room also during instruction. So that is quite crowded. I don't know what it's like to teach, but I assume that is not the ultimate learning environment. Students are placed in the hallway to receive instruction. The other use is needed on other non-education spaces for instruction. The special education team chair is required to have an office per contract, but does not. The administration or the principal of the school had to take away a sensory room for students in a therapeutic school to use as a classroom. And next year, the classrooms will move into specialist rooms. The Hurd Wyman has two slides because of the massive space issues at the Hurd Wyman. It does not have bubble rooms. Any new classroom next year will be in the library in the specials in rooms. The team chair and the BCBA share an office. The assistant principal is in a first-floor teacher workroom. Content specialists and reading specialists share the large conference room, and the staff is holding meetings in a very small conference room. You can read, I won't go on, but there's a litany of various moves that had to be made in order for the Wyman to accommodate the growing rise program while also trying to accommodate the general ed program within the school. There is a instruction happening in the middle stairwell on the stage in the reading bookroom, creating a fourth kindergarten, had to move RISE 2 to the art room. You get the point. So you can see that there are non-education spaces, including a stairwell being used for instruction. The Hurd Wyman has six lunches per day because the numbers are just too high to hold lunch. The Malcolm White. The SOAR program was originally at the Malcolm White, but we moved it to the Alta Vesta last year. So in order to save the space problems, we moved a substantially separate program, and we will, we are loath to do that again. The teachers in the Malcolm White are slowly running out of storage space, and they often have to keep the materials in their car. The Malcolm White has space right now to accommodate one to two bubble rooms, but that is a very small number for the Malcolm White. There is an increased staff concern regarding the lack of parking. And the Malcolm White, above all the other schools, has a disproportionately high level of multilingual language learning. Students with multilanguage learning needs. So if we were to redistrict, that is something that we would like to see dispersed amongst the school district. Last but not least is the Shamrock. The Shamrock does indeed have a bubble room, so that's good. The building is in full use. It houses the RISE 1 program, and it currently is using four classrooms for that. It has a RISE 2 kindergarten classroom. I'm sorry, it has six classrooms for RISE. Apologize. RISE 2, we had to move to the Hurd Wyman in order to free up some space at the Shamrock. What's interesting about the Shamrock in terms of our space capacity issues is that it can only go to 16. It cannot go to any more classrooms than 16 because we need to preserve space for the RISE 1 program. The anticipated school-based needs for the special education program are as follows. Next year, we will be taking 14 to 15 classrooms for the pre-K. The RISE 1 is staying the same as of right now. RISE 2 needs one more classroom. GAIN is staying the same. SOAR is staying the same. PALS remains the same. I will now turn it over to Dr. Crowley to talk about the modulars. It is the committee's recommendation to the city in order to alleviate the space issues within the school system that we acquire modulars and add them on to extra space for the school system. And I will pass it over to Dr. Crowley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Wasn't sure I'd get here. First of all, before I talk about modulars, and that's why I'm here, I just wanted to say thank you to the City Council for having us tonight. Thank you for your support of the Woburn public schools. We're having a very good year in the Woburn public schools this year. And I do think that we continue to have a good school system, a great school system. And so thank you to you for your support. Thank you to the school committee members here. And also thank you to the staff and the teachers and parents that are also here tonight. So I want to recognize that it is a community, it is a village, and we're all here for kids. So with that being said, I want to, I'm going to speak about modulars and how we came to this option. And momentarily, we'll give you a presentation that was done at the school committee that gives you a little bit more detail about the modulars. Lenny Burnham, Director of Facilities, is here as well. He put together the presentation. So if you have any technical questions, he can answer those for you. One of the things that Ms. Crowley, no relation, talked about is we have a space issue in the Woburn public schools. When I started in 2015 here in Woburn, I believe there were five preschool classrooms, four at the Shamrock and one at the Reeves. And as I stand here tonight, there's 13. And it's going to go to 14 next year. And so in real time, things have grown and changed. 25% of our students are on IEPs. And so that requires special services. You hear me talking about this at budget time, but it also takes up space. 15% of our students are ML students or EL students. And so that also takes up space. And so while we still have the same number of buildings, our needs are different. You hear it at budget time, but I'm also telling you that it's a space issue. And when Ms. Crowley's talking about teachers, three in a room with partitions, that's really happening. And so I actually want to, I don't want to neglect thanking the mayor for our Friday walks. He and I typically every Friday and the majority of you have gone through some of the schools to see what's happening with our students and to see the space issues in real time. So thank you, Mayor, for that. With that said, you can do the modular presentation. I have a slide deck, hard copies there.
Motion to accept, make part of the permanent record.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
So Mr. Burnham, if you're still here.
Back rate.
Oh, sorry. Just, you could be in the bullpen.
Don't forget Joe. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thanks. So again, Ms. Crowley alluded to it. Back in 2018, 2019, we did a study on the growth of Woburn. And actually, on February 29th of 2020, it was a Saturday, a bunch of people from the City Council and School Committee, including some people in the room, we did a field trip of the school district. And I remember the date of February 29th. It was leap year of 2020, just before we shut down for COVID. And so I'm mentioning that because the space issue has been at the top of mind for quite a few years. This isn't a new thing. What's new tonight is this idea of modulars. One of the things that happened was when we faced the idea of space, how can we create space in a most cost-effective way? One of the things that we pursued was modulars. Now, we learned that there were modulars down at NOSIT Public Schools, which is on Cape Cod. There are 37 modulars being used. NOSIT High School is going through a phased renovation. Those modulars have been in use, but they're coming offline in June. In November of this year, some members of the school committee and myself, we were at a conference, MASC conference in Hyannis, took the time to go tour the modulars with the NOSIT Public Schools. We've seen them, you'll see pictures. They're operational, they're about five years old with a lifespan of anywhere from 20 to 25 years, so I'm told. And this is where I go out of my depth when I, you know, with the building. So Mr. Toro, please understand. So let me, let me go through the modular presentation with you, if I can. Maybe I talk too much. Well, I'm going to have to go this way. This is an aerial view of the, of the current configuration in NOSIT. I'll blow up this slide because this is the slideshow, the numbers. So estimated cost. Real numbers. NOSIT Public Schools paid approximately $500,000 to purchase the modulars. They purchased them from Lincoln Public Schools. Lincoln used them for a year, NOSIT's been using them for about a year. And so I've been told that the cost of the unit is negotiable and that no reasonable offer would be refused. I actually keep checking back with NOSIT, including today, because what I don't want to do is say that this is an option and then have someone else have purchased them. But as I stand here tonight, under the impression that the modulars are still available. The, these costs are from Mr. Burnham. So the transportation would be approximately $500,000. Breakdown and assembly, about 1.2. Foundation, 900 to 1.7. And apparently, that is variable based on the soil that you're putting the foundations on. I did reach out to Denisco Design, who we have used at the city level for multiple projects to determine where modulars might be best suited. There's been talk of different places in the city, whether it's at the Kennedy, at the Reeves, at the Joyce, where there's land available. Denisco Design quoted me back in early February, $30,000 to do a study to tell us the best place to potentially put modulars. We haven't done it yet. And so those total anywhere between 2.7 and 3.5 million. The specs on the units, like I said earlier, there's 37 of them. They all have heat and air conditioning. There are restrooms. There are classrooms, there's breakout spaces, a nurse, admin, teacher workroom, et cetera. And so it's basically a complete school. In NOSIT, it's a standalone unit. The kids are, they're high school students, so they can move from the building to another place. But the space itself is more than enough to house the current ECP program. And so that was why and how we arrived at this as, as an option. Again, you have the detailed specs here. The classrooms are 850 square feet. And for those of you that are, I don't mean to insult anybody, but modulars are like Legos and they connect. And in walking through them, and I don't mean to dismiss Legos, they actually, they feel and look exactly like a school. And if I can advance the slides, I'll get the pictures to show you. One of the Denisco Design areas was off the Kennedy. You can see the red area there. They put, this is all just hypothetical because Denisco was trying to be helpful to me. They put, this is all just hypothetical because Denisco was trying to be helpful to me and to us to just kind of brainstorm ideas. None of this is done in any way, shape, or form, but just conceptual. And again, here's an aerial view of the NOSIT buildings. And an outside view. Included back when Mr. Burnham did this presentation to the school committee, one of the things we were looking at at that time was potentially the Linskett-Rumford as an ECP. The reality is, the expense there is at least $20 million, according to Denisco Design. The parking is limited. The ECP program requires more than 60 parking spots. We have a lot of staff that are attached to the ECP program, so that would be a consideration as we move forward. The Wyman School, we also looked at using the Denisco Design. And the cost there is 23 million. The other thing from the feasibility report was adding an ECP attached to the Reeves and building off the Reeves on the backside. And I believe that expense was about $30 million. And so, I just want to be clear that different options were pursued. Is there another slide or is that it? Okay, so with Mr. Burnham in the bullpen, anybody have questions on these?
I have one question.
Are we done with the, are we done with the slide? Are we done with the presentation?
Yes.
No.
No, I have, I have, sorry. So, what happens without modulators? Without modulators, like I said earlier, there are nine classrooms currently at the Reeves. And when I started, there was one. And so, we've put a preschool playground there. The Reeves loves having the pre-K. The pre-K loves being at the Reeves. It's a symbiotic relationship. The reality is that the Reeves wasn't designed to be only a pre-K program. It's the only school on the West Side. And so, as you keep adding ECP classrooms to the Reeves, the regular ed classrooms, the space becomes more and more limited. And so, as an outcome, that's what I'm trying to say here, there would be fewer classrooms for students on the West Side if the classroom, the ECP classrooms continued to grow at the Reeves. And with the future growth on the West Side, the fear is that soon we would be at capacity at the Reeves and then have to relieve pressure points at the Reeves somehow, moving students from the Reeves District to other places because we don't have space at the Reeves. And so, that's one of the reasons, in large part, why the modular option is appealing. I'm going to go off script. I'm just, the modulators give you, give us an opportunity to reset the district. I gave you the numbers. We're told it's a $5 million expense. And so, I don't mean to be dismissive, it's a lot of money. The cost of some of the other options are significantly higher. In my opinion, the modulators give us at least 10-plus years to house an ECP program and simultaneously build a North Woburn School or a middle school with an ECP program. Everybody here has been through an MSBA project, the majority. We're not in the queue at all yet. And so, once we put in for bid, and we anticipate doing that in the near future, we're six to eight years away from actually opening the doors of a building. And in the interim, we run the risk of running out of capacity at our schools. If we don't have modulators, we're going to have to do what we've been doing, which is every year, looking how to relieve pressure points. So, last year, we moved the SOAR program, which is a sub-separate program from the Malcolm White to the Alta Vesta. We moved the Assessment Center from the Goodyear to the Linskett. We moved the, RISE is an autism program. We moved part of that to the Shamrock. And so, one of the, it's down at the bottom, the unfavored approach is continuing to move some of our most vulnerable learners. And so, without having the space, we are going to have to continue to look at pressure points every year. And as a new homeowner in Woburn or an existing homeowner in Woburn, the concern is that we don't, we can't guarantee the school that you're going to go to based on size. And so, we do have lines currently. I've said it at school committee meetings, the Avalon up at the Mall is a good example of what we don't want to happen. When that opened up, the students were assigned to the Alta Vesta, but as the Avalon became more and more populated, the Alta Vesta couldn't handle it. So, they had to be redistricted to the Goodyear because the Goodyear could handle it. And so, what we really, really don't want to do is to have students start one place and move to another. And so, that's the concern that we have as it relates to the space with the space capacity issues. And so, the questions, have we exhausted all of our options? I would say we have. And we've looked at all different buildings, we've looked at all different scenarios. The feasibility study has been done. We've priced out different options, as I alluded to earlier. The ECP Task Force, I want to thank school committee member Jesse Wetzel for heading that up this fall, that multiple times. That was attended by teachers, there were community members on that. And it was their recommendation to pursue modulators. The modular recommendation flowed to the school committee, and that is why I'm here tonight, speaking to you. There were long, intense subcommittee meetings, which you can imagine. And we are trying our best to meet the long-term needs of our students in a growing and popular city. I heard tonight, I've learned tonight actually about the overlay and the number of students that are potentially coming here. And Ms. Mercer Bruin's point is people are coming here and they want to be here, and kids are coming here. And so, our student population is growing. It's different than some of the other communities that are declining. And so, I think it's a tribute to Woburn, the city of Woburn, that makes it an appealing place to raise a family, so. For us, the ECP is the nucleus. If we were to have our own place for an ECP, all of a sudden, you have 13 classrooms that you can utilize to move students. And so, if you have nine classrooms at the Reeves, that opens up a lot of space for, was it Kettle Town?
Kel Town.
Kel Town, sorry. I know, I apologize. But different, different options of places for students to go, both with the Reeves, but also the Shamrock, and alleviates some of those pressure points. The Hurd-Wyman and the Goodyear are our most crowded schools at the moment. And I alluded to this earlier, we're not just a regular ed system. We're a district for everybody. Again, budget-related, we've tried to build programs to keep students in district. It's cheaper to do that than to send students out. And we do send students out of district. But again, I credit Ms. Ryan, Ms. Young, we've really worked collaboratively with a variety of different stakeholders to come up with different options to meet the needs of all of our students. And so, with that being said, I think that's the last of my slide. Here we go, City Council says yes, and then we move on. No, the, I like, I keep reiterating. The long-term, when I'm thinking long-term, I'm thinking until a new school gets built. And I don't know when that is, but I do know that it's at least seven years away. And so, I can't tell you how many new students are going to move to Woburn in the next seven years. This option presented itself. We believe it's the best option, both in the short and long term, for the city and for the students and for the families and staff. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Counselor Viola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Have any building engineers or construction people looked at these actual modulators?
From the school department? No.
So, you've had nobody look at them? And we've known about the modular since when?
We were made of the, we were made aware of the modular availability in probably October.
October? So, five months has gone past that nobody from any type of building trade or engineers looked at them to see if they're actually structurally sound still, correct?
Yeah.
I just want to say, we have Flansburgh as the engineer and architect.
Lenny, Lenny, just for the record, just your name and address.
There's nothing to address, he can just. Facility Director, the Woburn Schools.
Thank you.
So, Flansburgh is the architect and design consultants that did the project in NOSIT. We have all of their documentation that it was structurally sound and was functional when they opened them in September.
But we haven't sent anybody to look at them?
We have not, we have not.
Is there a reason?
We have any funding to do that.
We, the schools couldn't have asked the mayor if the building commissioner could look at them?
No, we did not.
That would have been a good idea, I would think.
Sorry, President Dillon.
Hold on one second, sorry. Has it been looked into, probably doing the pre-K two days a week like other cities and towns have done as a pressure point?
We can't do that, Mr. Viola, that pre-K is required, so we can't diminish the services of special education students.
Okay, is there a rea-
Get to two days a week would be severely limiting those services.
Is there a reason why maybe other cities and towns could do two days or three days?
I do not know other cities and towns.
They may also be full day.
Okay.
Where we're half-day.
What happened to utilizing the Shamrock for the ECP? I know that was brought up.
It was, I think you were actually at that subcommittee meeting. It didn't go forward from the subcommittee, they didn't recommend drawing a map of the ECP at the Shamrock.
Is that because maybe the parents and the teachers spoke out against it? Could that be possible?
It would be a reason I would have, I wasn't at the subcommittee meeting, I believe you were.
I know it was alluded to that a room maybe needed to be used to, used for instruction that has no windows at the Reeves. I know that's been, happened in the past, so I don't see if that would be an issue now. The slow repurposing of the Reeves Elementary School, the only school on the West Side currently to accommodate the growing of the ECP, I don't think is a great idea. Busing a great deal of students from the Reeves to what was alluded to to me, the Linskott, is a ludicrous idea. I don't see how you're going to take kids from the West Side, bus them 20 minutes north up to North Woburn. I know that wasn't in the slideshow here right now, but it was alluded to me from somebody on the school committee. And-
Do you have any plan at all to bus children from the Reeves to the Linskett?
So, having a conversation with me yesterday, you did not mention that?
No, Mr. Viola, I would not say that, and I don't recall.
Okay. Was the parent advisory committee or the school committee made aware of this presentation prior to tonight?
Oh, yes.
Are they aware that we're here tonight?
No, were they aware of the actual presentation, the slideshow that was going to be made present tonight? Like, all options that were on there?
No.
I, for one, have a financial responsibility to all residents of the city. I can't in good faith give $5 million or vote in favor of modulators because there's way too many questions that still need to be answered, and I just think it would be in bad faith going forward with us. Thank you.
Counselor Papalatto.
So, I do have a few general questions. So, the, is the modules being used for temporary pre-K housing that population? Is that what this is for, or it's broader than that?
Currently?
No, what is, what's the plan?
Oh, our plan would be to house the ECP program entirely.
Okay.
Yeah, so 13 to 15 classrooms, but all the teachers, the staff, the pairs, the BCBA's, the speech language therapist.
But it's temporary until the new solution is in place?
That's the vision, yes.
And how long is that? What kind of timeline is that?
Yeah, so, we would have to submit to MSBA next year to get into the queue. And then, from there, it's anywhere from five to seven years, I'm told.
Okay. So, a few, I jotted a few things down in my head, and I'm sure, this is a tough situation you have here, it's not an easy solution. But just to throw out a couple of ideas around, do the, do the special ed portion of that group have to be with the general ed group, or can they be separated?
They have to be together.
They have to be together?
Yes.
Have we looked into moving around some of the administration from the Joyce to other locations or work-from-home programs to free up some space and put the ECP at the Joyce?
I believe that was looked at last, last week. And I don't believe there's enough space at the Joyce to do that.
It would be about 10, we would get about 10 classrooms. That's the very rough estimate. And we, 10 classrooms is not going to help us.
Now, you looked at other options like, you know, Boys and Girls Club. I know that was used during the pandemic. Is that some kind of option that you could leverage for a period of time?
So, the quick answer is, I've had casual conversations with the Boys and Girls Club. They run their own program there. They don't have dedicated space that they could give, like, provide to us. It's, their, their program is already built with walls and so forth and so on. There's, the club is vacant, but we would need to make some renovations, if you will, to the club to make it more user-friendly for the ECP.
But I just feel like that there's got to be some, I mean, this was done in 20 minutes while you were talking, there's got to be some other ideas out there. You've been looking at this for a long time. This isn't new. I know this has gone on and on and on. But I think the solution isn't just to throw money at things. There's got to be some other potential options in there. And I spit those at you in 20 minutes of listening, but there's got to be some out-of-the-box ideas to address some of this.
So, we actually, I'm going to get the names wrong. We did work with the city to look at some commercial properties. Who's the? Casey Hagerty on the city side researched some vacant commercial properties for us this fall, but they weren't suitable.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor DeMamvo.
Dr. Crowley, would it make sense to do a full redistrict? And then, once you take and you fill up all the seats around the city, and then you could put the ECPs couple in one school, couple in another school? Meanwhile, send through the MSBA, like I've said, that I would be willing to support a combined Alta Vesta-Linskett full ECP up in North Woburn when you build the new Alta Vesta school? Is that an option that's ever been considered?
We have not considered that option because the redistrict, if you, the modulators provide the opportunity to fully redistrict. If you redistrict and then add the modulators-
put a wing up there, and, you know, obviously, put security, you know, conditions, and make a wing of the high school ECP. And then, I'm just kind of spitballing here, and thinking that there could be seniors in the high school that could, you could, you know, use as a volunteer program if they ever want to continue on with early childhood development or education in that area. And you could use them as a volunteer outlet while they were up at the high school. These are just things that I was thinking about, without having to buy the modulars. And again, you know, considering a new AltaVesta-Linscott combo, and like I said, we have the land up in North Woburn, you put an ECP up there, temporarily, of course, you having these, these ECPs scattered throughout all the elementary schools, you send through the MSBA, the, the combo school up in North Woburn, and then when you're done with that school, shift all the ECP over to the new AltaVesta-Linscott. Is that an option that's ever been considered?
I'll, I'll start. Ms. Demanville, I appreciate the innovation. We can't scatter ECP throughout the district, because a lot of the schools are just not equipped for an ECP, they don't have the right playground, and just, you know, scattering the program just isn't an effective learning.
How many schools currently have ECP in them now?
Two.
Just two?
And taking a wing of the high school is just going to, is, the, the high school will run out of capacity. So, that's an option that we looked at and quickly dismissed. And, and fully redistricting does, we can't quite do it, because there's not enough space in order to do a really meaningful redistrict unless we have the modulars. What we will do, if we don't have the modulars, is do something called, really, pressure point maps, where we would just take learners and move them from very populated schools to less populated schools. And what we're going to see is that the Reeves is going to cause a bubble effect on the entire district, because the, when you take that school offline, it's going to cause crowding in the other schools.
When was the last, when was the last time we did a full redistrict in, in?
1989.
1989, 35 years ago? Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Counselor Campbell.
Yeah, thank you. I'm trying to wrap my head around the early childhood program, and that it's mandatory to have in the schools. Is this what you're saying?
Yes.
No matter what?
So, it, it's mandatory for three-year-olds in the city of Woburn who are in IEP to have preschool, yes. And then, it's mandatory to have peers in that classroom. So, we have over 200 students in our ECP program, split between the Shamrock and the Reeves.
Okay, so, we have the early childhood program wreaking havoc on the whole, on the whole program of our Woburn public schools, which seems crazy to me.
So, I, 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 may I-
Am I misunderstanding something? I mean, it is-
Yeah, I, I actually, I, I, I-
I mean, for most people, school starts in first grade. I mean, obviously kindergarten, you have half-day programs.
Kindergarten, right, right, yeah, well, the-
So, to think that the early childhood program is directing everything for the whole public schools just doesn't seem right.
So, the, again, the growth of the ECP program in my time here, we've, we've seen it, we've, we've, my first year as a superintendent is when we started migrating ECP classes over to the Reeves from the Shamrock, because the autism program at the Shamrock was growing so much, so we had to start placing the ECP program. There was one ECP class at the Reeves, so we went there. They have a ramp and they have a nice playground, and that's one of the factors that, you know, when you, when you're thinking about where do you want an ECP program, you want students to be able to walk out and be able to play. One of the schools, as an example, the Malcolm White, that their playground is, would not be suitable for our littlest, youngest learners.
And who's making that decision? Is that you making this decision, or is it a legal issue, that it's not appropriate? Well, who's making that decision that it's not appropriate?
The, at the Malcolm White playground, we're actually, that's been a capital request for a few years, because the condition of the playground, it, it, we need a new, we need a playground at the Malcolm White for, for all of it.
I know, I understand that, but who's saying it's not appropriate?
Well, the size wouldn't be appropriate for, for three- and four-year-olds, when it's geared towards five and up. The, the structures-
Okay.
-of a playground.
So, is it, is it mandatory to have a structure for these young children, or can they just have a, someplace, a nice flat area for them to run around in?
Ideally, you'd want to have a, a, a structure for them to, to play. I, I'd have to check the law as it relates to, do you have to have the structure?
Okay, so, you said ideally, but unfortunately, we're, we're, you know, we're having some rough times here, so we really need to think outside the box. In my view, most little kids, they love to run, or they love to move. I think that there can be creative ways for the children to be able to enjoy the outdoors in a way where there isn't a playground, so that maybe they could be moved to different schools or wherever would be more appropriate. I don't know if we have to have ideal situations, as long as they're safe, they're able to learn, they can be creative. I mean, doesn't that make sense?
I agree, and I think that's where we are.
Okay.
And I, I just want to add one thing, that it's not just the ECP, as you put it, wreaking havoc, that is a big part of it, but we also enrolled 300 learners in one year that are not in the pre-K. So, we are seeing tremendous amount of growth in the schools in, in enrolling hundreds of children a year. So, it is the ECP and the growth of the ECP, but it's also just growth in general.
Okay, so, learners are children who just-
Students.
Who are, yeah, okay, okay. Let me see, what? All right, that is explaining it, it just seems, once again, a little crazy. The roof leaks in these buildings, I guess, I'm disappointed they're not being fixed?
I would say that they're being fixed, temporarily being fixed. You know, again, Mr. Burnham could speak to it, I know at the AltaVesta, they've had issues at the Shamrock, that's been a capital request for a new roof, it's, it's reached its lifespan. And, you know, the facilities department does everything they can to accommodate when things happen, but at the AltaVesta, for example, this, it was built in 1969, I, I don't know when the, the last time the roof was replaced. You know, one of the things that I've learned, well, as a homeowner, but also in this job, is, you know, you know, you don't wait for your roof to, to fall apart before you replace it. And one of the things, when we talk about schools, the, the Reeves needs things, even though it's one of the newer schools. And so, that was part of the reason and the rationale for the feasibility study, so that we're, we're proactively staying on top of the, the needs of the facilities before they become an issue.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Just a couple other thoughts in my mind, I was thinking of what Counselor Papalow said. What about something like using the cafeterias?
They're in use with other students.
All day long? Or other students have classes in there?
So, at, at the Hurd Wyman, for example, Ms. Maloney's the principal, they have six lunches that start approximately at 10 o'clock, she calls it the all-day buffet. And so, like, it's, it's a real thing, like, they're, they're-
Okay.
The space isn't there.
Okay. Counselor Viola brought up, I think it was you, Counselor Viola, there were, there are other cities that have kindergarten, or they're different programs two days a week. Is this something that can be looked into, where this might work? I mean, how many days does preschool have to be in session?
So, currently, our, our pre-K meets four days a week, and, but they're only meeting for, that half, that half-day. And so, ostensibly, if you're a full-day program, you may be able to have less hours, but when you're on an IEP, there's, there's grids that we have to meet, service grids that have to get met for students, and so, they need the time in school to, to receive the services.
For preschool? For preschool?
Absolutely for preschool. We build, build the-
I'm sorry, I just, um-
The IDEA requires services to be provided for children starting at the age of 2.9. So, if, if children move into Woburn and they are, they qualify for special education, we are mandated to program for those students. And there's a lot of childcare centers springing up in Woburn, if you haven't noticed, and a lot of those students are referred to the Woburn program, because our program is superior for, for learners that have various learning abilities. So, to cut, to cut a program to serve space needs is, I don't think the committee would ever agree to that, it just really wouldn't be.
Yeah, but you, the problem is, is what the schools are costing is more than what the taxpayers want to pay. We already had a major increase because of the amount of money that was given to the schools just recently. And I had so many older people contact me about these increases, and now for modular schools with $5 million, and it, believe me, obviously, I want the best education possible, but it seems, once again, that it's taking over the whole school system and the rest of the other children. And I know this sounds like your hands are tied, but I cannot support modulars, I can't support $5 million for them. I believe that we can find other ways, as, as other counselors have said, there has to be creative ways to still give the children a good education and meet the lawful needs and, without spending $5 million to do so. So, I would love to see if a two-day program would be more feasible, more economic, but also help the children as well. I mean, I guess, contact some of these cities that have the two-day programs, because somehow they're meeting all their needs. So, I think that would be a great place to start, to find out how, how is it they're doing it? How are they able to do these programs? And we might have more students in them, but still, there's got to be a way that it can be done. Because I'm assuming that the $5 million need for modulars doesn't count for the amount that the schools are going to come forward in the budget process with their increase. So, we have to think about that as well. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Demas.
Thank you. I think the last thing that anybody here wanted to have happen is hit one program against another, especially with ECP. I think, I see a lot of educators in the crowd this evening, and I know for a fact, with my education degree, that the interventions, the assessments and the services we provide to students that young, get them early, so that we can get them the services that they need, so that they progress farther along than a standard child coming into school at kindergarten. Those services before kindergarten are what help those kids achieve more.
Oh, no, I, I do understand that.
So, I think that, that's a vital cog in our educational servicing program, having learned a lot about it when I was on the school committee. Big concerns that I have is the dollar amount, because I see up there on the screen, three point, whatever, and then we're being asked for five. Did I miss something there in the middle, from that number to the $5 million piece?
We don't have the utility cost, because we don't have an exact location.
Okay.
So, there's an estimated another 1.5 in utility.
So, all the, all the types of tie-ins and everything that you'd have to do?
Yes, water, sewer, electric.
So, water, sewer, electric, everything, okay.
Right.
All right, just wanted to make sure, because I've seen it twice already. My big concern on that $5 million is it's going to, basically, going to have to come out of our stabilization fund. That is going to be something that shows up with the bond rating agencies. And my big concern is that if we're going to be spending $5 million on these modulars now, by the time we go and try to apply for MSBA and get the financing together for that new school, that bond rating impact will impact our interest rates that we'll be able to get for those particular borrowing, for the, for the school program. So, I'm concerned that. And I'm, I'm assuming that you're well aware, that as the counselor for Ward Four, me agreeing to spend $5 million on modulars, when I've got folks in the crowd here who would like me to spend $5 million to save a castle? It puts me in a very peculiar situation. So, that all being said, I know that we've had severe limitations when it came to the MSBA and other projects, where we couldn't basically shoot for the moon, we have to go with what their parameters are based on the student population at that time. Do you think the fact that it's kind of like a blessing and a curse now, where we, we've gone the way of the MSBA in a lot of our facilities, and it's kind of hampered us, in the sense of we've lost flexibility by having so many schools funded by the MSBA?
I will respond that in 2018, we opened the Hurd Wyman, it is now children learning in the stairwell.
Right, right.
But I also-
So, I just, I just think that's an important consideration, because we limited our flexibility-
Yes.
-to get a better reimbursement from the state, to get new schools. I just want that to be noted.
Thank you. Ms. Demers, I, I wanted to thank you for your comments about the special education needs of our youngest learners. I will just remind the council that the modulars are assets, so it would be investment in an asset. We would own them and then be able to resell them at a, at a later date. I know that drastically changes our mind, but-
No, but I got to tell you, I think a modular is more of a depreciating asset than a boat in your yard.
But anyways, I appreciate your comments, I also appreciate Ms. Campbell's comments, I, I understand.
Yeah, no, I just, I wanted to get my two cents in there. When we were looking, when you had those slides up that looked at different renovation costs? If I remember correctly, when I was early on the school committee, didn't the MSBA have a, like, an addition program or a renovation program that would yield a higher reimbursement rate?
They, they do.
They do?
Yeah. I don't know the rate off the top of my head, but they do have a-
Some, like my colleagues here, we're trying to spitball to come to a-
Are you referring to accelerated repair?
Yes.
I may be.
That's what, yeah.
It may be different now than it was, because I thought we could basically, I thought we could basically get like 65% if we renovated or added on.
I think it's mechanics, windows, and roofs.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so it's now limited?
Right.
All right, well, that doesn't work.
We tried that one.
Yep. I just, it's just a tough decision with the $5 million. We just had a tax levy that hit everybody pretty hard this year. There's needs across the city. I'm sure there's other departments, I, I'm sure there's other departments that, you know, would like to see an increase in their budget somehow, to get some stuff that might have been put on the back burner for the large investments we made in the, the school department this past budget. I'm just going to need to see more information. I'm not, I'm not prepared to commit to $5 million at this time.
So, just to clarify, Ms. Demers, and, and Ms. Campbell, and I started off by saying thank you, because I recognize the investment that the city council made, that was in our operating budget.
Right.
This would be, you know, this is separate from our operating budget-
Yeah, no, definitely.
-because to your point, we're in the process of developing our FY '26 budget.
And to your point, too, capital expenses, we have all these newer, I won't call them new, because a lot of them aren't that new anymore. We owe it to the tax-
So, just to clarify, Mr. Demers, the, and, and Ms. Ca- the, um, and I started off by saying thank you because I recognize the investment that the city council made. That was in our operating budget.
Right.
This would be, you know, this is separate from our operating budget because to your point, um, we're in the process of developing our FY '26 budget.
And to your point too, capital expenses. We have all these newer, I won't call them new because a lot of them aren't that new anymore. We owe it to the taxpayers to do the capital expenses, to put these buildings and keep them running properly so that they don't go into disrepair after a big firm commitment from the community went towards their construction. But, yeah, it's a tough, tough decision. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Counselor Toro.
Thank you. Thank you both for the presentation. Um, it took a lot of questions, I think, in regards to the ECP program and potentially how to reduce it, uh, to alleviate some of the concerns. I, I'm on the opposite side of the spectrum. My wife is a pre-K teacher in Somerville in their ECP program, and Somerville has a full-day ECP. I'd eventually like to see Woburn have the same thing.
Thank you.
Um, you know, I don't know if it's something that comes soon or, but it's like, it's something that I'd like to work towards. It's, I see it firsthand, both with my children that attended, they were, they had the luxury of attending Somerville's full-day ECP program because my wife teaches there, and the foundation, as Counselor Demers mentioned, that they gain, you know, when they go into kindergarten and first grade. It's, it's something that you don't necessarily gain, you know, pre-K is optional. It was so, but it gives them that foundation to really give them a step above or step ahead. Um, so I'd like to see a full-day program eventually. Um, I do have a couple of questions. So, in the slideshow, you mentioned, there was a mention to full use versus exceeding, right? There was a slide that mentioned full use, maybe Goodyear, and then exceeding. It might just be super basic, but I just want to clarify, what is, what is exceeding? I'm assuming is overcapacity, full use is at capacity, or what, is there, am I, is there a better definition or better explanation?
That, that was one of my words. So the, the, in, in characterizing the Goodyear and the Hurl Wyman, because there's no instructional space, there's not enough instructional space available to students during the school day, that's exceeding.
And that's, when they're exceeding, that's when they're teaching in the hallways?
The hallways.
Things like that?
So like the Alta Vesta? I don't know if that's the slide, but it's full.
Yes.
Full, so full, they have enough classrooms to teach inside, and exceeding is teaching in those common spaces essentially? Is that what works?
Always, stairwells.
Gotcha.
Stages.
So full-use classrooms do not, uh, have that at this current moment? Is that correct? Like, if you, if we're going to a full-use school, or, yeah, a full-use school, they are not teaching in those, in those common areas?
Correct.
Right now?
Yes, the, the, interestingly, the Alenski and the Alta Vesta don't have those spaces, right? Because they're smaller. So the innovation for space issues in the Alta Vesta and the North Woburn region is much less. So the tolerance for, um, being full is a lot more concerning in North Woburn than it is in the bigger schools. If that makes sense, Mr. Toro? Thank you.
Yep, yep. Um, in terms of, so it seems like most pressing we need for next year, two to three classrooms? It was like one or two and, based on the slide, one or two in one program and then one in another, is that correct?
Yes.
I think in one of the slides, I don't, I'm not gonna find it in time.
Special ed.
Um, okay.
Yeah.
And it looks like, looking at some of the slides when we were going school by school, it looks like some schools have some maybe random space available. I guess my question is, is, in, what is the, what is the mandate for the maximum class size for, let's say, gen ed compared to special ed, I guess? What, what's gen ed, what's special ed?
Thank you for asking that. Oh, um, go ahead.
Um, so our, contractually, our, our class size is 26.
The gen ed?
Uh, it, that includes re- gen ed and special ed.
So in each, so in either a special ed class or a general education class, you can have up to 26?
A substantially separate classroom probably can't go more than eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're talking about ECP. I, I, I'm just...
Oh, so I guess, so there'd be, okay, so, I'm just, what I'm really trying to figure out is, so I know we say all of our rooms are, are, are being utilized, but I guess we haven't seen any numbers specific to, let's just say, we'll use the Reeves as an example. So let's just amuse hypothetical numbers. We have 14 classrooms, but do we have eight classrooms with 18 children and then seven classrooms with, you know, 14? So I guess, is there room that, okay, all these classrooms might be used or a max capacity within the schools, but do we have space within the classrooms to bring, to maybe move some, shift some kids over potentially to then free up classrooms to make things available within the district, I guess?
So I, I think, I'm gonna try to answer it.
Yeah.
Let me know if I do.
Sure.
Um, so, one of the concerns with that is that you're increasing class size, right? So that's a, that's one of, one of the primary concerns of, uh, families and, and teachers. Um, you know, ideally, uh, you'd want to have a class size of anywhere between 20 and 22. Um, so at the Reeves, you know, you might have a class of 18, uh, in one group and you might have 21 in another. Um, uh, if you started adding in, um, to your, I guess, to your question, like, if you, um, that class size escalates, um, you, you could ostensibly, um, you know, create a class somewhere as a result of that, um, but you're impacting class size somewhere else.
And my wife would probably beat me for saying this because she's a teacher and class size, you know, she'd like to have a smaller class size to give kids a little bit more attention, right? But I think in our current landscape, when we're trying to figure out temporarily what to do, when, while we all agree that, that North Woburn school that could potentially house the ECP program, uh, would be a, is, is kind of maybe the next step, if we temporarily, within the contractual, um, agreements or arrangements, increase the class sizes to free up those classes, is at a potential, right? Um, you know, I, I have a unique experience. I, I lived through modulators. I grew up in Somerville and they renovated, knocked my, we were K through 8. They knocked down my school and I was bused to modulators, um, you know, during my...
And you turned out okay.
I turned out okay. Not bad, yeah. Um, but, you know, so, so I don't, in terms of a, a learning environment, I, I didn't see it any different, right? I think as a city councilor, similar to Counselor Demers, my concern is kind of the money. I've always been a big supporter of the schools. I have two kids in the schools. I'd much rather, and I'm, I'm, I'm totally fine giving money to the schools. I recently read to the Goodyear in the Shamrock, and I'd rather spend 2.5 million dollars on fixing the Shamrock roof than potential modulators, you know what I mean? If, if, if it was up to me specifically, there's a lot, we see the capital plan every year and we see the necessities of our school department to try to avoid disrepair and, and the cost associated with, uh, not keeping up with our buildings. Um, you know, it is a tough situation for sure. Um, there was one last thing and then I'll, I'll kind of let it go, but Counselor Demers loves to talk about the Wyman Castle. Um, and there is a slide on here of $23 million to renovate the castle. And I've heard that before, right? And we're, we're, you know, in a total separate matter, wherein we're talking about what to do with the castle personally as both, you know, a resident of the city that wants the best and also as just a business person, I'd rather spend money on a hard asset, which is something like the castle. You, we, if, if, if it were ever talked about, uh, in more detail, spend money to renovate the castle, utilize it again as the ECP, we can, it's a dual purpose. We keep the building within the city, we keep that facade, and it's transitioned back to a normal use, and then you don't necessarily have to spend the money for an ECP wing on North Woburn School. And, again, this is just one, one person talking, but if we did do something like that and we bonded the money as opposed to pulling it from the rainy day fund, it has a much less detrimental impact on anything within our city, right? It's not, generally when you bond money, it's not a tax increase, especially at that amount for the city, uh, for the residents, and, you know, we're not, we're not pulling money out of, out of our rainy day fund. But I know everyone here would love to see that the facade of the castle remain, and I think we've kind of agreed to that. And you get a playground and parking and it was its original use. That's just my own opinion. Um, but, but I'd rather see that than spending $5 million on modulators. But I spoke enough, I'll let someone else jump in now.
Could I, could I just respond to something? Because I, I think when you were talking about seats, I'm glad you asked that question because what you were saying is, um, there could be a, a classroom over here that has 15 kids, and then there's a classroom here that is up to 32, so let's move them over, right? That's what you think?
Something like that, sure.
Okay, yeah, so that is what, that's pressure point. That's what we're going to have to do. We're going to have to find seats for students, and our fear is that, um, it, the, the schools will not be necessarily their home schools. So we'll have to kind of hunt around for seats. It's not, it's, it's a perfectly legitimate question, but I just wanted to make sure that, that is actually the, the next option for us.
And I would have loved that either, to see if my daughter was...
No, no, of course not, I know.
...victim of that move, right?
Right.
It is what it is, you know, I'd love my daughter to stay, she's at the Goodyear, I'd love her to stay there, but, I don't know, it's just, you have to balance the, the benefits to the city to, to, you know...
I just, I'm glad you asked that because I wanted to clarify for the public that they, they, the things that might look a little different next year, and we can't control the stability of redistricting and looking for open seats without the, without the acquisition of modulators. And then the second thing I wanted to address is that the, um, the Wyman is actually very small. So the, the new, new Wyman is only six classrooms. So although we would love to join in and, you know, saving an asset, um, six classrooms is small.
On the, on the PowerPoint, just the last slide, unless I'm reading it wrong, it says Wyman School, 23 mil, 35 k square feet, 16 classrooms plus administration, gym, cafe, kitchen, nurses area, custodial and storage, 44 parking spaces and small playground area. So the 16 classrooms, it's referred, like, the 23 million and the 16 classrooms, so where is that coming from?
That's probably the whole Wyman.
That's the whole facility.
Yeah.
That's the entire...
Gotcha.
Thank you for asking that.
Sure. Good, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Counselor Papalatto?
Just two, two real quick questions. Does the program generate revenue?
It does generate revenue, but it's, it, um, it, it's not self-sufficient. The school department funds some of it.
It is not, or it is self-sufficient?
Correct.
That was a choice. Is it self-sufficient or isn't it self-sufficient?
It's not self-sufficient.
Not self-sufficient.
Right.
Um, so we would be, we would be running this program at, we run it at a deficit as it is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Foullo?
Mr. President, the hour is late, I'll be short. I didn't make any friends with the Wyman School crew, I'm not gonna make any here, but that's okay. Um, I'm a huge supporter of you, Matt, you know that since the day you got here. I'm a huge supporter of the Woburn School system.
Me too.
You too, yeah. I told you that the other day.
Scared there for a minute.
Um, and better than both of you, Lenny Burnham is awesome. So I, I just put that right out there before I start down my road. We're, we're, in the slide, it says that you use the schools, we build the schools. Is it, on the business side of this purchase, is the city gonna keep the money and do the project, or do we just give you guys a check and say, go do the project?
I think you do it.
Any, you want to weigh in over there? No?
We would be required at OPM to cost a project.
Right. Okay.
So it would be city involved.
Could you, is a, can we guess on procurement laws? I mean, this would have to come into us, the RAS, you would have to do an IFR. This isn't something we could take a check and drive down the Cape, have lunch and buy these things. This, this has to be a project, right?
So my, my understanding, the, the, we can drive down the Cape and have lunch.
I'm always up for that, you know that. I'm big on lunch.
I'm gonna have the humor at 11.
We may be here for lunch.
No, I'll be, I, I, I made a list so I wouldn't ramble. I made a list.
Um, I, I believe, uh, well, you can, you can speak to the procurement. Um, municipality to municipality, uh, can, can happen, but beyond that, the procurement would have to kick in.
Correct. Because it's municipality to municipality, there's precedent already that we could go to these numbers and not have to put it out to bid.
Put transportation and stuff for you.
And all, the whole project. NOSA did it when they purchased it from Lincoln, so they gave us the whole packet on how they did it.
Okay.
That's, that's one of the reasons we're keeping the same configuration because it's less expensive. It doesn't have to be re-engineered or redesigned. We basically take it apart, pick it up, put it back in Woburn the exact same way. We could reuse all the engineering documents and it's the most cost-effective way if we were gonna do it.
Okay. I, I just want to help me, me understand the bubble. Now I'm changing topics. When I was at the veterans' school, the third and fourth grades were bubbles. And what they ended up doing is, one of the grades, we had to split the class in half, the third grade faced this blackboard, the fourth grade faced that blackboard, we had a single teacher and we taught in the room. If somebody bubbles up, what happens to the teacher that's in the room that's left behind? If you have a fourth grade is 20 people out of whack, and it goes up to the fifth grade, what happens to the other fourth grade teacher in the fourth grade classroom? Doesn't the bubble classroom travel with them?
Yes.
So we really wouldn't need empty classrooms? Am I just not saying it right?
Uh, I'm not sure, I...
A fourth, so what, a bubble means is, help me...
She needs, um...
I'm sorry.
If she, if someone's going to speak on your behalf, would you please have them come up to the microphone?
Can you help me with that, Pat?
Come on up, Pat.
I'm sorry it's so late, I just want...
I would like to follow...
I wanted to say...
Just one second before you talk. Just bear in mind that we do have to deal with the open meeting law, and I see a number of school committee members here, so I just want that to be known, that we don't...
I'll withdraw my question if it makes it easier.
No, I just, if, if the third, fourth grade, the teacher could go up to the fifth grade and teach the fifth grade, so the class size would go up with them. It's not that we remove kids.
I understand that, but why, I don't understand the need for empty bubble classrooms. If there's a bubble, it's gonna travel for five years.
Oh, oh, sorry, I, I, now I understand. So, for, for example, at the Malcolm White a couple of years ago, um, uh, we had two, uh, I'm making up grade levels here, but two fourth grade classrooms.
Yep.
Um, and then over the course of, from July through till October, the number of move-ins to the Malcolm White necessitated a third classroom be added in real time. And so around Thanksgiving, we had to add a third classroom because of class size, and that bubble, if we didn't have that room to put this, put that class, um, that, that's the bubble that we're alluding to. If that, does that make sense?
No, it, it does. Um, and then just a, a general concern is that with the $5 million that's gonna have to come out of the rainy day fund, the roof that needs to come out of somewhere for the Shamrock unless that's outside funded, the initial numbers we saw for your level funded budget and that percentage and the wish list, I'm petrified of money, and I'll leave it at that for the night.
Thank you.
Counselor Mercer-Burne?
So a couple of things, just for the public watching at home. There's absolutely nothing in front of the city council except for a bunch of PowerPoint slides. There's nothing for us to vote on. This was an informational update. Um, the $5 million number, um, we haven't even been given a real breakdown of the numbers. These are estimates from a third party, not people that represent our interests and the real cost. So I, I, that's a non-starter for me. Five million is a non-starter for me. I, I heard things like the modulators give opportunity to reset the district another 10-plus years. I heard what you said about not being able to redistrict this entire city. I'm sorry, I don't think we've tried hard enough. I don't think we've tried hard enough. That's a, that's a hard message to deliver. I'm not a, I'm, I'm not on the school department, but I know that it's taken a long time to try to even get to this point. I don't see this as a solution, um, and, and I won't support $5 million for something that doesn't even belong to us, that's not an asset, certainly not from the rainy day fund. I heard some other things that, that concern me, um, that we, we have to do this, there's a time crunch. Why is there a time crunch? Why hasn't this presentation been delivered to the city council months ago?
I don't, I don't know what time crunch...
Oh, okay, we, we were told that there was, and I was told by some members that there was a, a ti- you guys needed an answer and you needed an answer fast. If that's not true, that is so good to hear because that means you can go back to the drawing board to figure something out.
Well, two things, um, oh, do you want me to respond or did you have more?
Um, again, I will point out that you've given us a presentation here with a lot of numbers. The main numbers were provided by a third party. They haven't been validated by anyone, engineers or anything that represent us. They're estimates. There's, there's no way to know if this is going to cost five million or seven million. There just isn't, not, not based on what's, there's no breakdown of anything, there's no detail here. I've, I've sent back appropriations for five thousand dollars that, because it didn't have enough detail. This certainly doesn't have it for me and I'm sorry if that's, seems harsh, but that's, that's true. I agree with Counselor Toro and Counselor DeMers. This program is very, very important, but I think there's a lot of smart people in the room that we can figure it out in a different way. And that's, that's all I have to say, um, for now. So thank you for your time and your information, but, um, I, I can't support this.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell?
Um, just a couple of things. I really love the idea that Counselor Toro had mentioned about the Wyman School. I feel like that might kill two birds with one stone, um, by keeping, um, the important building of the Wyman School. Also, we would have a hard asset, which is important compared to having modulars, uh, system for the, for the students. And I realize it's more money, obviously, but I also think that it would help keeping our rating, which is so important as well. But I just have a question. The, did you say that the program is not self-sufficient, the ECP program?
Yeah, so we-
Can it be made to be so?
If we offered full day, we could charge more and become closer to a self-sufficient program. Right now, because our program is split, um, it's a very cost-effective, uh, program for families. We try to keep it that way because we want, uh, students to come. So again, I think if, if, you know, when you look at the cost of some of these preschools nearby, um, we're not in, we're-
It's outrageous.
It is, right? And so, um, we're not, we're, we're not here to make money as a, as a public school system. Uh, we do charge, but we, um, again, I think we're limited because the amount of time that the, the students are with us, um, you know, we, we don't really, um, offer the same level of, of service that some of the private preschools do, um, so our cost is much less.
We also can't charge for special education, so-
You cannot, that's what I was going to-
Right, you cannot. So only the, um, typical neighborhood peers are fee-paying and, um, since we have a half day, we obviously can't charge that much. I also want to address the issue of the Wyman. We put in an MSBA application for the building of the hurled Wyman and told the MSBA that the Wyman can no longer be used as an education facility. And so now the, the, the idea to renovate it kind of is going backwards on that. And then I wonder if it could ever be adapted to a ECP because it's not ADA compliant, so we'd have to bring it up to code, renovate it, um, and that would be a substantial project. I'm not saying that it's not possible, but it's certainly a substantial project. I just wonder if it would be reverted back to a general ed school. So then we'd be reverting back from putting an application into closing the Wyman to bringing the Wyman back online and then separating the hurled Wyman. Just seems, um, confusing, I don't know.
Yeah, it does, but I, I, hopefully if, if it was twenty-three million dollars to renovate it, that hopefully we, it would be able to be ADD compliant at that point, right? So, but I don't know. Once again, we're just trying to think outside the box so that, uh, we can make everything work. But the, the, the module is just, I, for me, is, just doesn't seem like the right way to go. I, I think it might be the easiest solution, but I don't think it's the best solution, at least I don't think so for the city. But thank you.
Thank you. Counselor DeMers?
Just a quick follow-up. Has there been a policy discussion had about expanding the ECP to all-day?
Oh, yes.
Due to the fact that we've, we would have modulars? We, we haven't, we haven't done the modular full-day conversation yet, Mr. DeMers. If we were to do a full day, uh, we'd be adding staff as well. So we, we haven't had that conversation. Okay, I just want to make sure there wasn't an ulterior motive. No. For more space. Thank you, Mr. President.
But you could do full day with less days of the week, couldn't you? You could do-
I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay.
Counselor Campbell, I don't think so. I don't think so.
Counselor Mercer-Burne?
As I said, there's a lot of smart people in this room. I know that it can be figured out. I have heard from parents across the city, they're anxious, they want this redistricting done. So I just had a little sidebar here with my fellow Counselor Demambro. We would be happy to help in that I've heard from parents that there are classrooms that have eight people, classrooms that have fifteen people, depending on the schools, which suggests to me that we could do the redistricting without the modulars and maybe we just haven't put enough effort into knowing exactly how many people are in those classrooms. So, uh, again, maybe-
We, we do have a class sizes and we, we've provided that to the school committee, um, on a, on a regular basis. If there's eight students in a class, it's a special ed sub-separate classroom. If it's a regular ed classroom, it's usually, um, on average nineteen or twenty.
Like I said, smart people in the room, I'm sure you'll figure it out. Thank you, President Dillon.
Counselor Viola?
Mr. Chairman, seeing that we have, uh, members of the public in attendance, could we open it up to them? Can I make a motion to open it up to the public to speak?
There's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before we do that, just, um, one, uh, two comments for me, if my co-counselors will allow me to-
Of course.
Speak on this where this is, where this is an informative session. Based on the research I've done, the life expectancy on these, uh, how long, Dr. Crowley?
I've been told twenty, twenty-five years.
And they're how old now?
Five years old.
Five years old. Being a construction guy, well, bad term, I used to be a construction guy till my current state, but based on what I've done and the research, every time you move these, it cuts into the life expectancy. That is, I just have a fear of us purchasing these and getting a bill of goods. I don't know why, I got a gut feeling. It's, m, m, maybe with more information I'd be convinced, but with what I see now, we haven't had a construction specialist look at it, we haven't had a structural engineer look at it, we're, we're taking the word of somebody that already is in the process with them. You know, it's, it's just, I want an independent party out there crawling underneath them, making sure they're structurally sound, making sure wherever we're going to put them, the other big question, right? If, if you go to ask any contractor to build you a house and give you a price, the first thing he's going to say is, where's the lot? Very difficult. And I know that we have placements in there, in case you hit ledge, in case you have, uh, bad soil conditions, but just a lot of concerns, a lot of concerns. And my last question is, on the old Wyman School, with the loans we took, what I think you're telling me in layman's terms for me is we'd have to perhaps pay back if we made that an educational, is that true?
That's what I suspect.
Okay.
I think it would be complicated.
We'd never get another application through them.
Okay, let's look at if that's the case, maybe, and you guys are the experts, maybe we can use, move our administration that are in some of our schools and move them over there so we wouldn't have to pay it back. I'd much rather, like the council says, put money into a hard asset rather than a temporary asset.
Or I can't refute that, um, that discussion point at all. And I understand where the council's coming from. Obviously, it's an asset that we own in the city. Um, but I am concerned about the MSBA complications associated with building a school while also saying that the Wyman is no longer, you know, educationally sound.
And again, that's why I bring up, I don't know how much space administration takes throughout our schools. Maybe spend some money there.
So years ago, um, when Joe Alea was still with us, uh, we actually did look at-
He's still with us, I saw him the other night.
Joe might be a little sad.
He's a little, yeah. Fair enough. Now, we, we did look at, uh, moving administration to the, the, uh, not the castle, but to the, the, the other side of the, uh, the Wyman. And I, we, actually, I, I believe Denisco probably drew up something, um, at that point in time, um, but there's a multimillion dollar cost affiliated with, with that move and so it didn't move.
I, I get it, I'd just like to see what that, how many multimillion dollars compared to this, approximate five million dollars?
No, I, I, I guess I, I'm just sharing that because we've tried to think through a lot of these different things over the, over the years. The other thing, and respectfully to the, to the council, um, you know, we, we didn't send a structural, we don't have structural engineers for the, on the Woburn Public Schools and it would cost money to do that. And so to send somebody down there at an expense that may or may not play itself out, I think on our side was, we were just trying to be conservative.
Absolutely get it, but you understand our side, we're trying to understand this, but we don't have the information in front of us.
Understood.
Thank you. There is a motion in a second already to allow the public to speak?
I voted on it.
Thank you. So is there anyone here that would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward and again, the only reason I caution on the school committee members is on the open meeting law. Anyone here that would like to speak in this? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President, John Kiran to Wyman Street. Just a couple of other perspectives. One is that when I was mayor, we moved the portables from the white. The city did it, it was the city job, it is possible. We got some good use out of it. They're temporary buildings, they have a temporary purpose, that's what they're for. What I haven't heard mentioned here is, I'm assuming one of the big reasons this is being looked at is, well, one, it's an opportunity that's presented itself that's rare because it's, this doesn't just fall on your lap usually like this, so. But the other is that if we were to renovate the Wyman or another building, that would take time. You have a redistricting crisis. My, my daughter is in fifth grade right now, she's moving up to the Kennedy next year and selfishly, it's not going to affect my daughter, but, you know, I know because I go to these schools and I see it every day and, and the hurled Wyman is busted at the seams, it's a brand-new school. And it's a crisis, it needs to be addressed. And I've heard a lot of you talk about your own professional educational opinions on what to do, but with all due respect, you're not educators. You need to take at face value what the educators are telling you. Your job is to decide whether it's financially feasible to do this and whether this is a good investment for the, for the city and if, if it's a good investment in the students and the, and the community. And I think that it is. I think that it's going to address an immediate need and, uh, you know, I don't know all the details of, of the decisions that were made and how to do it or how we got here, but five million dollars in a community that has thirty-nine million dollars of excess levy capacity, which is twenty-two percent of your whole total levy, is, is more than manageable. And in terms of the, the, the bond rating for the community, you could take some of that money out of your overlay reserves, which is not recorded for, um, bond rating purposes because it's not recorded as an asset yet because it's not declared a surplus. So if you wanted to do that, you could do that without impacting the taxpayers. You could also take money out of your reserves, borrow the money, take money out of your reserves each year to pay for it and then put it back for free cash. It wouldn't affect your reserves at all and the taxpayers wouldn't be affected either. It's five million dollars, no offense, but in municipal terms, it isn't a lot of money. And you could do it in a way, in a community that's so fiscally strong as Woburn without batting an eyelash. The bigger issue, which I haven't heard at all, is what the operational impact would be on the school budget. That's the thing you should be worried about. This capital investment is easy for the city of Woburn. It should be a no-brainer to do this. The bigger piece is that, is the operational cost of what it's going to do. But the even bigger piece is what's the impact on the students and the community and what do they deserve? And if people are coming into this community, as they say, with the population, and I've seen it, I've seen it as a father, then, you know, we need to pay attention to it and that's a good thing. Young people coming into the community is a good thing. And I don't think we should discourage that and Woburn can handle that. And you can do it in a way that's fiscally responsible without hurting the taxpayer. It's the operational budget piece that you need to worry about. So I would suggest, I agree with you completely, you need more time, you need more information. I don't think you should make a decision on this tonight, it's a resolve, but I certainly think it has a lot of merit and it's a crisis that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this matter? How are you tonight?
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good evening, Kristi Nickerson, Nine Jones Avenue. I am co-president of the Woburn Teachers Association and I just felt compelled to come up to say that we definitely have a major space issue within the Woburn Public Schools. There's no doubt about it. I don't, I don't think there's any classrooms that have eight students. We have definite space issues. I work at the Alta Vesta School. We have multiple educators, multiple paraprofessionals teaching in one classroom. It's not ideal learning conditions for learners. So there's no doubt about it that there is an issue. But I do like what you said about there's a lot of smart people in this room. So what I'm asking for is that no matter what the decision of this council is moving forward, it's been my, I've said this in meeting after meeting after meeting, but we need a project that we are going to be all rowing the boat in the same direction on and we need to come together to find a solution to these problems and we need to work together to find what that solution is. We all have, I think, looked at various different situations. We've run different committees and different things to look at different situations, but some of these committees have conflicting interests. So as the, you know, co-president of the Woburn Teachers Association puts me in a tough situation. I have members, just like what just happened here, you brought it up, Joe, but I have members that, you know, are amazing special educators that work in the ECP program and then I have elementary educators who don't have enough space. This issue has become, the space issue is becoming divisive, not just between council and committee and taxpayers and the committee. It's divisive amongst my members because we are all trying to work towards working outside the box and coming up with solutions. So no matter what the decision is, I hope that you all will commit to working together to find a solution to this problem because it's a problem.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this matter? How are you, sir?
Excellent, thank you. Hi, I am Dr. Abhijit Gukle, thirty-nine Robinson Road, Woburn. Evening or midnight, Mr. President and council members. I heard that Reeves may be converted to ECP school and existing students will be transferred to other schools. Reeves is at one end of the town. If there has to be a dedicated school for ECP, then it makes sense to choose a school that is centrally located in the city to minimize the commute. If Westside Reeves students are transported to other schools, then these students will be on the bus for a long time. Same with some ECP students who live far east of the town and has to trans, uh, travel to Reeves. So this option is not acceptable to me. The other option I heard is to shrink the Reeves Elementary School and transfer some of the students elsewhere. Again, the same issue, longer commute time for impacted students, breaking friendship, uh, friendships that those children cultivated at Reeves School. How is it in best interest of children to abruptly change their schools and break their social circles? Moreover, it would be a nightmare for the single parents who have shared custody and used to be in the same school district, but now they are not in the same school district because of this redist, redistricting or redistribution of, uh, kids and now the school bus doesn't go to both of their- to both of their homes. How it will be addressed? Will the bus routes be inclusive of such situations? Upon information and belief, approximately forty percent of children live in split households, so impact could be huge. My request, one, leave the existing Reeves students alone and let them attend Reeves, so there should not be impact on the existing Reeves students. Second, if there has to be a change, some change made to existing students at Reeves, implement them, the changes to next year, not this year, so the impacted parents will have time to mitigate the situation, especially, again, the one with the shared custody, and now they happen to be now in a different school district because of this redistricting issue. So while sitting here, I tried to search, but I could not find a state law that mandates that children has to get five days of ECP for each student, and that's why some of the council member brought up the question whether two days can be acceptable, so that might be an option, and that should be explored before we start impacting existing students. So again, any change to the existing students should be implemented at least 2026 or beyond, so the impacted parents have sufficient time to mitigate the issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else? How are you tonight?
I'm Beth Fortnum, I'm actually a parent at the Reeves Elementary School.
I'm sorry, can you say your name again, please?
Beth Fortnum.
And just a little closer to the mic for us.
I have two currently, soon to be, in a couple of years, three children at the Reeves right now. We are actually within walking distance, so I don't think we're in any risk of being redistricting, that's redistricted, that's not my concern. My first concern is that I'm hearing a lot that we're in a crisis, and I don't understand how we got to this point. I don't understand why this hasn't been addressed six, seven, eight years ago. My husband and I bought our house in 2017, we know what the housing market was like in 2017, it was nuts, and a lot of people that were buying around the same time as us started having children around the same time as us, and we're hearing that you were doing fertility, or whatever, birth rate studies in the city, so how did this not, how did we not see this coming, is what I'm really trying to understand. And if this is the case, from the situation and the plan that the school committee has laid out, I wanna, I don't see really a well-thought-out plan where we have plans to renovate Alta Vesta, we have plans to renovate Lynn Scott, we have plans to, where's the new school gonna go? We have plans to renovate Kennedy, which I've also heard is on the list of schools that need to be renovated or expanded. And so what I wanna see from the school committee is, I'd like them to come back with a well-thought-out, detailed plan, and what these modulars are gonna get us. How are they gonna buy us time, and what is that time gonna be used for exactly, and how is it gonna benefit all the school districts? So I'm, I think, as a parent, I'm just disappointed by the lack of foresight, and then also the lack of details in the current plan that's being presented, so. And, and one more thing, the, my other concern about the modulars is that in five, six, seven years, when we're done with them, we're gonna be paying to dispose of them, because nobody else is gonna want them, because they're gonna be that old and they're gonna have been moved that many times. So I'd like to see the, the engineering study on those modulars to tell us that we're gonna get something back from them, even if it's no money back, but at least somebody else to take them off our hands, so we're not paying to get rid of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this?
I realize it's very late, so I will try to be quick. I'm Alex Tisdale, I live on Five Majority Lane. So regarding the ECP, it's already been said that we as a school system are required to provide preschool, and more specifically, special ed services, or an individualized ed plan, an IEP, to our students who need them. My son, for example, is one of these children. He aged out of state-funded early intervention the day he turned three, and at that time, his additional support services, his PT, his OT, his speech, became the responsibility of the school system. If my family, who were taxpayers, didn't have the wonderful ECP program that we have, the Woburn Public School System would still be responsible for getting him these services, which if not available across our district means busing him to available districts to do so. This year, there's roughly a hundred kids on IEPs in the ECP program. Without an ECP, getting these kids the services they need sounds to me like a costly and continuous endeavor, that's only going to get worse. While we're on the subject of special education, it must be known that we're in a position that some of our children are receiving special learning services in the hallway behind curtains. I don't know about any of you, but I'm a proud graduate of Woburn High, and I want better than that for our kids. Hearing about condensing classrooms as a solution to our space problems makes me a little nervous as a parent. To understand the space capacity issues at Malcolm White, it's important to understand, at Malcolm White, for instance, I'm gonna talk about Malcolm White, because that's what I know. It's important to understand that classroom size equity, or the number of kids in a class, does not equal classroom complexity equity, which is basically how all the students are able to access their learning. By the number of students in a room, the Malcolm White currently appears to have space to add in more students within contractual class size numbers, but as we know, that number does not tell the whole story. Just because number-wise, we could fit more kids into the classrooms in our current school footprint, it does not mean that we can actually accommodate more students with similar demographics and needs as our current students, and maintain positive learning outcomes for all students. For example, currently, currently there's a kindergarten class at Malcolm White with eighteen children. It's easy to look at this number on face value and think that there's room there for more students, but it's important to consider the kind of supports these students need. What someone can't see by simply looking at the numbers on a map is that within this class, there are seven multilingual students and two students on IEPs. That means that half this classroom of five and six-year-old learners are children with higher learning needs. In addition to the additional time, attention, and support from teachers and providers, these students need pullout spaces and additional service rooms in the building beyond their classroom. Services and support that I hope that everyone can agree that our children need and deserve, and not to be showcased in the hallway. I realize this is an extremely difficult problem to fix, but our kids are important and they deserve a safe and high-quality education. Like Kristi, I hope that we can work together for our kids and come up with a solution to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this matter? How are you tonight, Rachel?
I'm all right. I'm tired. I'm Rachel Cooberry, I'm at Sixth Blake Street, I'm a Herald Wyman parent. So, my thoughts are a little bit all over the place, so apologies for that. I wanted to share that I asked some questions to the school committee that I thought were really important questions about, the, the only information I have about the redistricting and the modulars is the maps that we have, that are draft maps about how things are gonna look with where kids go, and so looking at those maps made me ask questions about how we're using our space, and I didn't get answers to those questions. And so, I still need more information to understand why we need the modulars. I appreciated the information tonight, I still have more questions. In my response from the chair, she said, "We have not yet put the maps to the test, if you will, and dissected them in the way that you present in your email." So, I'm just a person looking at them, I'm just pulling numbers together to try to do my best to understand that, so it's disconcerting and disappointing that, that my, like, basic level of looking at the maps hasn't been done by other people in this situation. And I think it lacks real fiscal responsibility. I mean, a lot of this conversation is around the five million dollars that we need for the modulars, but there's not a lot of consideration for other fiscal parts, and what, what certain things are costing us and what other things are saving us. Like, I actually didn't see a lot of numbers in the presentation tonight, I want to see more numbers. So, I think we're too deep into this process to not be able to answer those questions. So, we have real problems, we have real problems at the Herald Wyman, that's my school. I think in the presentation tonight, it was clear, that's the school that has the most pervasive problems in the most different ways. There's overcrowding, there's poor space use, and it needs to be fixed not only at the Herald Wyman, but in other places as well, but I haven't been convinced that this is the solution. Just a couple of other things that came up in the presentation that I want to comment on, and in your questions that I want to comment on. First, about exhausting all options, I don't believe that we have exhausted all options, I hear that from you guys as well, in particular, the elementary parents on the advisory group sent a letter asking to see a map without modulars, we sent that letter a week and a half ago, and we haven't seen that map yet. So, we, so we don't know what it will look like to, I understand that we think that it won't work, but I want to see what it would look like so that I know it won't work, and I will get behind that being a bad idea, but if I don't see what it'll look like and they just tell me it won't work, that's just not enough for me. Other things are, in your questions, I hear real confusion in questions about what our obligations are to ECP, and perhaps that's pervasive through our intensive special needs programs at the elementary schools that are taking up a lot of space, like the Rise One and the Rise Two programs, the GAME program, the SOAR program, and they do take up a lot of space. The question about, I think Mr. Turo asked it, about what, how many teachers, students, what's the ratio for general ed and special ed? I think the regs, I'm a special educator, I think the regs are twelve to one for special ed. That's a garbage ratio, like, we should not be having twelve kids in a classroom, the regs are lower for ECP, but that's not what we should be shooting for, that's dangerous in many cases, and that, that, so it's, we don't really need to work off that number. But these are, like, their requirements, there are kids, I had a meeting last week that some of you guys attended to listen to with my school, my school has the Rise Two program, the Rise Two parents are very concerned about this, the school is very concerned about the Rise Two program moving, and I want to make sure that we all know these are kids that we have to service, we have to service these kids as preschoolers, and we have to service these kids when they're in our elementary schools. They're taking up space, that's true, all of our kids are taking up space in different ways, and so I want to hear more about what we can do to fix this, because it's a real problem that needs solutions, and like I said before, I haven't been convinced this is the solution, so, thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Anyone else that would like to speak in this matter, please step forward.
Hi, Christopher Sylvia, Thirteen Bent Street, and I just want us to be very brief, because I'm tired, but, you know, I agree with the person who said that five million dollars isn't that much money for a city of this size, you know, I want us to be responsible with every single dollar we spend, but, you know, we're talking about the timescale where I'm planning to have kids, and, you know, I don't want there to be overcrowding there, and if we're sending our kids to other schools, maybe if we have a little bit of extra capacity, other schools will send us their kids to us, and we'll get their money, or something like that, but, you know, we're gonna have to do this big game of musical chairs with rebuilding the schools. We've got something like seven elementary schools, we'll have to rebuild one, we'll send the kids from one to the other, so I just think that, you know, if we can get some slack in the system, then that's good for the system as a whole, as, even if it's not ECP later, but, you know, I just think that, you know, when everything's jammed up, nothing can move around, that's when you're really, really up without a paddle. I don't know what I could say in a public meeting, but I don't want to get there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to return to the regular order of business.
Second.
Motion and a second to return to the regular order of business, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Make a motion that the matter that was before us be placed on file. Oh, I'll withdraw.
Thank you. I just, and I know it's late, but I just want to clarify one point that was Counselor Melissa Bruin and Chair Crowley were talking about, and it was about the essence of time, how important it was, and perhaps I was the one who represented it was important to get them in front of us as quickly as possible, based on the facts that I was asked to have them come in front of us in the April Fourth meeting, which I did not feel comfortable with, because I didn't feel it would be vetted long enough in front of the public. So that's why we're here at midnight, and I do feel that it was portrayed to me that time was of the essence, and I want to clarify that before the end of this. Thank you.
Make a motion that the matter was before us be placed on file.
Second.
A motion and a second to place the matter in front of us on file, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is resolved to la, oh, no, is a resolve regarding Kindness Day.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion that the resolve be adopted.
Second. There is a motion, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pushing to adjourn.
That passes. There's a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at eleven fifty-one.